...to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you, everyone, for being here tonight. Thank you for those who are joining us online. We will start with special recognition, spring sports and activities. Mr. Matt Scott.
Okay, good evening. Typically, we come at the end of each sports season and activity season, and this year, just due to some changes to the board calendar, we had to provide this recognition a little bit later in the calendar year. So what we did is we put together a slideshow because we weren't sure exactly how many of our folks, our coaches, our athletic directors and activity participants would be able to show up. But thankfully, we do have some of them here tonight. So we'll just kind of get right into our recognition. We want to start off tonight with Destination Imagination. And Alyssa St. Helera is going to speak a little bit about our teams.
Yeah, good evening. I'd like to introduce to you the popular princesses. We have Haley Mason, Olivia Bates, and Kri. And they have one other team member named Olive who wasn't able to be here. And they are some of our high students. And Chinook. They placed first at the DI State. The category of service. More importantly, they placed ninth at Global's, and they got a special Renaissance Award. I think only four were given out at Global's. Is that right? This is the second year the team has been together. And in the service learning competition, they had to identify, design, and carry out and evaluate a project that addressed a need in the community, create a story about a character who had to make a critical choice, have two potential outcomes and a complication, include a device that they created that did different tasks along with some different team choice elements. So we're just really proud of them and how they represent a county school district. Congratulations. We have an elementary team from Vista Elementary. We have the Extraordinary Sushi Boba. And if you guys would like to come on. I should mention, both of these teams are coached by parent volunteers that are supported by the district. Charity Kreese here with the Popular Princesses. And we have Leanne Smith and Anne Karati for the Extraordinary Sushi Boba. All right, we have here Rainier Smith, Fiona Karati, Emma Tuck, and Connor Quigley. And we also have one team member, Henry Fink, who wasn't able to join us. This is their second year together as a team. They were the Extraordinary Sushi Boba last year as well. And they placed first in scientific. And it was their first time going to Global's, and they placed 22nd in the elementary level. For the scientific challenge, they had to create and present a story in which a character who is located on a planet other than Earth thinks they are alone but discovers they are not. They had to include techno babble and create that for their story. Excuse me, design and build a device or an effect that demonstrates what the techno babble describes. I'm going to talk to you guys about that. Include a scientific demonstration that shows the science behind why a specific phenomenon of the planet happens or exists. And create and present two team choice elements to show off their amazing team skills. So we're so proud of you. Congratulations.
Thank you, guys. I went to Vista, too, by the way.
We also have some recognition to provide around our Math is Cool competition. So I don't know that we have our Math is Cool folks here. So I'll just talk a little bit. Coach Heather Mandarock at Desert Hills Middle School. We had two teams from Desert Hills, one the seventh grade team that placed second place in Division Pi. And those team members' names are listed. And Sor Emile, Abby, and Eleanor were part of that team that placed second at State. And then the eighth grade team placed first, and that is Brayden, Ethan, Jackson, and A.J. Seifert. This is the first time that we've recognized our Math is Cool folks at the middle school level. And I talked to Linda Stevenson right before the board meeting, and she indicated that she's really excited because these kids will all be going up to Kamaiakin. And she said Kamaiakin needs some good, fresh championship blood. So they're excited and great things at Kamaiakin with these students. So I wanted to give them congratulations. Next up, we have Kamaiakin High School. And there's a couple of recognitions we wanted to provide from Kamaiakin. One was to Amanda Rodriguez-Davila, who is one of our exchange students, actually. And she has, I believe, already headed home after her school year. But she placed second place at the WIAA State Solo and Ensemble Competition in Solo Guitar. And her teacher is Scott Wegman, and we wanted to recognize that for her as well. And then we also had our Track and Field Team at Kamaiakin had a pretty good year. And so I've got Kyle Schabel here, who's going to come up and talk a little bit about their accomplishments, starting with their state championship.
So I'm Coach Kyle Schabel. This is my 15th year at Kamaiakin as a track coach, assistant, and head coach. I get to coach with my mom. She's the head girls' coach. I'm head boys' coach. She's on her 42nd year. She's on her 42nd year as coach at Kamaiakin. So 57 years between the two of us. And she's just, this is her eighth state championship team, and this is my sixth since being at Kamaiakin. These two are big parts of it. Ezra Teeples also. Oh, Ezra just walked in. Come up here. So Ezra Teeples won his fourth state individual title between cross-country and track. He won the 1600 and the 800 this year. And then he was on the 4x4 that got second place. That sealed the victory for the team. And then Devin Cruz, right here in the blue, he's going to BYU after his mission. He's going to run track and field there. And Ezra's going to run at Boise State. And Jurey Long is going to run at Idaho next year. So some pretty studly kids. Devin Cruz won the 110 hurdles and got second in the 300 hurdles. Between the three of these guys, they set seven school records this year. So and Devin beat two of mine. And Jurey beat one of my old ones. And yeah, so and then Ezra beat one of his brother's old school records, too. So some good family lineage there. And these two are special, or these three are special. And it took a village to run this program this year. We had 13-week season this year, which I think we were paid for 12. But we had a 13-week season. And usually, we're done Memorial Weekend. This year, it went an extra week. So we're still recovering from that long four days of state. So thank you.
Next up, we have Kennewick High School. And unfortunately, Anna Harris couldn't be here tonight. But we wanted to recognize, in track and field, they had some finishers at State. Head coaches were Ty Crenowen and Sean Suss. You had Tessa Lewis, who was second place high jump. Peter Smith, who was second place in discus. And Marley Gardner, who was third place in high jump. They also had a pretty outstanding season with their baseball team. So Coach Lineares was the head coach of their second-place team at State. And so they're excited about that. Disappointed, obviously, not finishing first, but they'll take second because that was a great, outstanding outcome for them. So we want to congratulate Oliver Kennewick High. Also, I want to take a moment, and I know this went out on social media, but we wanted to also take an opportunity to recognize head football coach Randy Athalter, who was inducted this year in the Washington State Football Coaches Association Hall of Fame. So he has been a successful football coach for a number of years, and most recently here for us in Kennewick. And so we wanted to congratulate Randy on that honor as well. Next up, we have South Ridge High. And we do have athletic director Rick Wells here to talk about their athletes.
Hello, everyone. It never gets boring doing this. It's really exciting. I'm also pretty proud to be in a league where we have tough competition like we do from Kennewick and Kamaiakin. They have excellent programs across the board. So it's really great to see all of us raise our levels of play all the time. We had a pretty fantastic tennis season. We had a star in our boys' singles division. His name's Ty Parrish. He's actually at a tournament with our coach tonight. And he's also the number 99 pickleball player in the world, too. His second-place match, or the championship match, was the only match he lost the entire season. And he is two-time Player of the Year in the MCC and by far our best singles player of all time. So Ty Parrish, pretty awesome job at second place at State. So Coach Hurst is our head boys' coach. I heard one of the young men from Kamaiakin's going to go to University of Idaho. And Jackson Williams, our long jumper, is going to join him there. And he is our record holder in the long jump. He got second place in State in the long jump. And he set and broke his record like two or three times this year in the long jump and somewhere along the lines of 23 feet, which is about four or five feet past an F-150, if you think about it in perspective. So it's an amazing long distance. In our wheelchair division, we had one athlete there, Benji Dennison, did a fantastic job for us. He almost won four state championships. He won in the discus, the shot put, and the javelin. And just missed out on his fourth in two days in the 100 meters. So that was pretty awesome for him to be able to accomplish that. We're going to miss him. He did a great job for us. And then a young lady that improved incredibly throughout the year. There's a picture of her jumping over the bar there. And Cassidy Shell was a second place in State in our pole vault. So an amazing track season for our kids. Really good job there. I'm going to step aside for a second. Our head coach for our amazing esports team is here, Jason Giancola. I'll let him talk about his two different state championship teams. Jason, come on up.
I think this is the first time I'm not first up here, which gives me just a little bit of time to talk. So Smash Brothers, we've been playing this for the last four years, five years, five years. And we have come from a pretty far, far direction from where we first started. Our very first season, we went to State. We got knocked out first round by the team who eventually won State. And my freshmen during that year came and told me that they never wanted to experience that again. And for the last three years of Smash tournaments, we have won every single one. It has been a doubles and then three singles tournaments for us. And this year was our best performance at State, where we beat the other teams total 57 to 3. And so to say that we're pretty dominant, we've been pretty dominant. I'm really sad to lose a lot of these kids because about half that team up there are seniors. And then next year, I will lose the rest of them. So as they go, Mr. G, we probably got one more year in ourselves, but we'll see from there on. Then the Valorant team, this team was kind of, really kind of just thrown together. I have three kids who are on that team, who are immigrants, two from the Philippines, who showed up knowing very little English now nine months ago. And they go, yeah, we play some games. And then I was like, yeah, just come try out and hang out and have fun. And then from that point on, it was very hard to find them in any other place besides my classroom. And so they found Tom and Lyle, found a home inside esports with that. And then Otto joined us from, oh, gosh, I think he's Columbia, five months ago, and knew nobody at the school and fell in love with the group that we have there. That team, we were going in as one of the lowest seeds, which meant that we had to play some of the hardest teams out there. And I wish, I know some of the students have video of them. And I will get stuff to you guys. I know I got some to the media, and they got it out. To watch them play was so exciting. Like, the Smash Brothers team, we kind of knew going in, it was going to be kind of a repeat of last year and the year before. We were going to be in there. Some matches are going to be kind of close, but reality is, when you talk to the kids, they're like, no, it's all a show. With this, we went into place against the number-two team from the other side and only lost, their only loss was to their number-one team in a 12-13 match. So we knew we were going in in really an extreme uphill battle. And we came out on their team and started off 4-0 out of the rounds. We lost a round there. And then it was pretty much a stomp from that point on. And this was a team of, if you're looking at the skill of where they were at, it would be freshmen versus seniors who were going to D1 schools to start. That's what the other team stats were versus us. And to see them come through, and I had one kid on there scared, Kylie. She was scared to play. She's like, I'm playing into ascendance, and I'm silver. And I'm like, you're going to be fine. Just relax, breathe, have fun. And you literally saw the first round where they won. And I'm like, we're going to be okay. And then their goal was to just make it into trophy round. And that was it. And we ended up 13-16. The number-two team, 13-16. The team that beat us, the number-one ranked team, that beat us 13-1 in the season. And then to play against the team that came back on us in the state finals and ended up beating them 13-11. Sounds a lot closer than what it was. There were some rows where literally they're just like, we should have lost. But I hope to get you guys the video. I think I sent the video. Maybe. But I'll get that to you guys. It's a long video. It's a nine-and-a-half-hour-long video because it's all of state. But I'll give you where it's at. Brandon was causing earthquakes up on stage with how excited he was getting. Tom and Otto were getting really nervous when they saw Brandon get really excited. They just look over at him and smile. And they're like, okay, we'll take care of business. Lyle and Kaylee, they were on their own little island, taking care of their own business. And to see those kids step up and play into teams, reality, we probably had no reason to beat and just beating them. And so this year was great. It was awesome. And I'm looking forward to next year. We have four kids going on to CBC to play for their teams next year. So we're losing a bunch of kids to CBC and then seniors. But it's going to be, it's been fun for all of them that have been up here. And we'll rebuild and be back in that spot. But to those kids, I wish that they could make it. Most of them are on vacations right now. But it was, it was very exciting. I wish there was ways for us to bring state gear. And there's potential involved for us to do that. So, yeah.
Before I talk about cheer here real quickly, it was kind of, what's really neat about our esports activity program there is that several of the members of his teams are athletes in other sports. In fact, some of our best athletes are participants in that. It really crosses so many different demographics and different interests within our, within our school. So it's an incredibly inclusive group. And I'm just very proud of the program the way it does. When I get to go observe them and go talk to them or whatever, and they're in there working and strategizing and doing that kind of stuff, it's really cool. Our cheer program has been a very strong program for us this year. Our former coach, Melissa Wondland, she's actually moving on to Richland High School. And we've got a new one in place. But this last winter, we didn't have the opportunity to get them here for that particular thing. They were able to place at State in the small, small-division game day program. And we fully expect that we will be back in multiple categories again, competing for a state placement upcoming in this next winter. We have made a very, very large turnout for the summer program. So a lot of returning kids, a lot of talent, and we're in real good shape. And they did a great job this last winter. Thank you.
We have, we have one more piece of recognition. Robin, if you could help me here, please, I'd appreciate it.
Kennewick School District. Wait, she's retiring? Hold on, I've got just the thing. This calls for something big.
Hey, Dr. Pierce. Thank you so much for serving the Kennewick School District. You've been a huge support to Chinook Middle School and our entire school district. We hope you enjoy your retirement.
Pierce, I just want to say thank you for your leadership, your knowledge, and your passion for education. We're here in education to make an impact, and you truly have done that. But not only the students and the staff of KSD, but also myself. And again, I sincerely want to just say thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Tracy Pierce, for helping Kennewick shine brighter since 2020. Because of you, students at South Ridge rise.
Hey, Dr. Pierce, we've got a message for you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Very good luck.
Thank you.
Tracy, I learned so many lessons from you. And the most important one was how to retire. Congratulations. I know you're going to have a great one.
On behalf of the entire Transportation Department, we want to say thank you. It has been a pleasure to serve under you, and we wish you all the best in your much-deserved retirement.
Thank you, Dr. Pierce, for your incredible hard work and unwavering dedication to the Kennewick School District. Your leadership has made a lasting impact.
All of us at Sunset View deeply appreciate the time, effort, and care you've invested in our schools and students. Your commitment has truly made a difference.
We wish you, we wish you all the best in your retirement, Dr. Pierce. May this next chapter be filled with joy, relaxation, and new adventures.
Retirement means no more budget decisions, no more levy presentations. Congratulations, Tracy.
Hey, Tracy, congratulations on retirement. Thanks so much for your years of service for students across the state and for your leadership in public education.
Congratulations, Dr. Pierce. We'll miss you.
Hi, Tracy. Congratulations on your retirement. Well-earned, amazing leader, amazing friend. We are here in Prague. The National Theater is behind me. And I'm turning around here. And we are in Old Town. There is Cheryl, right there, with a friend of ours, Lucas. And we just want to wish you a happy retirement. Ironically, I'm two days from my own retirement, so I'll be joining you in the ranks of the retired. And thank you for your leadership, your friendship. We love you. Best wishes.
Thank you, Dr. Pierce.
Happy retirement, Dr. Pierce.
Happy retirement. Thank you. Dedication and commitment to Kennewick School.
Thank you, Dr. Pierce.
So quickly, thank you, Robin and the team, for that amazing video. They were able to get ahold of a lot of people to thank you for your years in service. Couple other quick things. One, it's my privilege to honor you with the golden apple that we provide everyone. And on behalf of the board, we've got a card here for you. We know you're going to do a lot of reading, so we got you a Book of the Month Club membership. So you'll be able to select some books and enjoy reading by the pool and coffee and all that, all that great stuff. So thank you so much. And I'm going to turn it over to the rest of the board to say some things. But it's hard to follow up with what everybody said in that video. You've dedicated your life to students in education across the state, specifically here in Kennewick, the last five years. You're leaving a lasting impact on everyone. And it is a pleasure to have gotten to know you over the last few years, the last two years even more so. And enjoy your retirement, and you will be missed. Mike?
Well, since I'm the only one aside from Patty that's been sitting up here with you since you took the helm, it's going to be very hard without you. You've been here since I started. You've feel it, all of my stupid questions. You have kept me from blowing a gasket more than once. And you have taught me a tremendous amount. And I'm, you know where I stand on your retirement. I'm not enthusiastic about it. I'm happy for you. Angry for me, but that's all right. Anyway, like I said, thank you. I could not have done half of what I've done without you. So thank you so much for helping me. And I don't believe Lance will be nearly excited to get the phone calls from me that you tolerated.
Yeah, I just appreciate everything you've done. Yeah, I echo what Mike said. It's going to be hard to not have you here. I don't, it's gonna be hard to not have you here and we'll miss you being here. It's been fun. I've loved our, our talks we've had together at WASDA and... Well, you enjoyed them, but I didn't. And, and I just appreciate how, you know, one of the things is, is pretty much anytime we ask anything, you always did it and, and you did it well. I just, it made, you know, when I first started a couple of years ago, or a year and a half, almost two years ago, I remember talking to some of the board members and just saying how surprised I was and how quickly you responded and often you had thought about questions or thought about concerns you might have before they were even there and, before we'd even expressed them and were already addressing them, giving us information, just, just well above, well, well on top of things. And then I think maybe the best example I can think of is, is that the whole issue a couple of weeks ago that happened with the ACT test, it had nothing to do with us. It was, it happened to be one of our schools, but you didn't have any direct responsibility for it. And yet typical of you, you just made sure, you found out about it. You said, "That's not right, we can't, we can't have that happen to our students." And so you made sure it happened. And then after you did all of that work, I asked you, "Okay, did you tell them it wasn't our fault?" And you were like, "No, we just needed to get it done." And I think that's, that's what typifies you is, is that you are more concerned about making sure it gets done well and gets done right than who takes the credit. You're not someone who needs everyone to tell you how great you are, but, but I think you are great and you've done an amazing job and I appreciate everything you've done, both for the district, but also for me personally. So thank you.
I'm a little overwhelmed to try to think about how to adequately express how I feel about you. You are an incredible leader and it's difficult to be a leader that is kind and gracious and moderate and diplomatic and still be a strong leader and you do that so perfectly. From the instant I was sworn in as a board member, I felt like I was part of a team. It took zero transition time at all and that's because of the culture that you've created here in the school district and with our school board. I really appreciate that. I've learned a lifetime of leadership lessons from you, just observing you in the past 20 months. I think that it is commendable that although this has been your career, it's been your employment, you've chosen to spend your time in a career that is very much in an attitude of service and you've approached it that way. And that's why we all love being here because we feel like we're serving a great company. Thank you for being the person who's directed that. And I'm with Mike, I'm, I'm mad for me, but I'm sad for you. I'm thrilled for you and just please come back and visit us.
So it's, I'm just, it's actually gonna be hard for me not to get emotional, so I'm just gonna try to like just power through it and act tough here. I have a deep love and appreciation for you. Many late nights, office meetings, phone calls, I mean, how many sex sessions, how many times have you sat in your office at 10, 11 o'clock at night with, with me? Grateful for that. There's a lot of things I could say, there's just two things that I want to highlight, although there's a lot. The two things I want to highlight are, we have all praised Vic for the budgets, but I don't think that you get the credit you deserve for that. I think that's one of the things that sets our school district above every other school district, certainly in the area and maybe in the state, is our budget. And I just, and I know that, I mean, you've pushed all that praise over to Vic, but really, it really needs to be fallen on your shoulders and, and the community need, doesn't know how, how lucky they, they are to, to have you for that. The second thing I want to say is, is the, the high achieve, I don't know, people don't always know this, but the, when people ask me about Tracy, because a lot of people do, I always say, "She's a high achiever." And here's what I mean by that, like Josh alluded to it, we would, we'll send Tracy, we'll send you an email, I don't know who I'm talking to, but we'll send, we'll send Tracy an email with a question and it's not, and she does not give us an answer back. She gives us an answer, an explanation, a law attached to it. I mean, her answers, your answers are so thoughtful, so thorough, so quick and just that, that high achieving mentality is something that I really, really admire because I'm a business owner myself and I really admire that about you. And, and also just the, just the culture that you've set with the cabinet, with everybody. I mean, I think that our board looks good because of you and the culture that you've set with the cabinet, the respect the cabinet has for us, for the board. It's, it's, that, that shows a tremendous amount of, of leadership and example. So I'm really, really excited to, to get your, your next board report. I hope that it's like, I woke up at noon, I had some coffee, here's what I did today. So I really, I'm serious, I really would like to get that board report. Anyway, thank you very much. Love you very much.
One, one final...
Can I say one more thing? I'm sorry. I also just, sorry, I just want to also recognize Matt Scott as well. Matt Scott is also retiring. His workman-like attitude, his, his positive, friendly, helpful, thoughtful demeanor, also really, really appreciate that. And I know he's flying under, under the radar, but he also deserves a lot of, a lot of credit.
Exactly. One final note, I think we found out it was 125-ish graduations total?
That's right. I counted them up, 125 graduations.
125, none better than the last.
Yeah.
Last one she just did, so again, thank you very, very much.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thanks for making me blubber up here, buddy. You know, I, I don't even know what to say except for thank you to the board for your leadership and, and your governance. I appreciate the board that hired me, I appreciate the board who's here today. I've got a great team and, you know, so many things that, that you mentioned, they're not individual accomplishments, they're team accomplishments. You know, all the great work that has occurred since I've been here isn't because of me, it's because of the people that I work with. It's the people here at the district office, it's the board, it's our building leaders, it's our teachers, it's our hardworking staff, it's our community partners, it's our parents, you know, all together working for the benefit of all those people. And, you know, bright shining students we saw in, in that video and, you know, I think about, you know, I'm not maybe gonna miss all the work, because I also counted up, I've done 374 board meetings over my career and that's a lot of evenings away from my husband and, you know, but I'm gonna work, so I'm not gonna maybe miss all the work, but the people. And I'm gonna miss all of you, I'm gonna miss my team and just everybody I work with and, and of course mostly the, the students, because I also counted up, I was curious how many classroom visits, I try to keep track and I think I count 755 in the time that I've been here. And so I just think about all, all of those students, you know, and all the students who cross the stage every year and I feel really proud of the work that we've done together. Here's a team and the work that's gonna carry on, you know, in, in the future. I mean, that's how this all works, right? We're all somewhere for a time and then we move on and the work carries on and there'll be generations more of students benefiting from all the hard work that goes on here. And I just see like the people here, you know, and, and like my team and I see our, our KEA partners and, and friends who've come to board meetings and just, I'm gonna miss everybody, so thank you very much. And I have some nice things to say about Matt and I'll do that in my board, in my board report, okay? Thank you.
Alright, we will move on. Communication from parents, staff and district residents. The Kennewick School District Board of Directors appreciates hearing from the community at regular board business meetings. The Board of Directors provides an opportunity for communication from parents, staff and district residents, this time as reserved, guarantee the working meeting for the board to listen to comments, input and information, or does not respond to comments provided as the goal is to listen and learn. Finally, please remember that words, that your words have impacted you and our school district are responsible for your words. Guidelines for addressing the board, please come to the podium when called, you'll have two minutes, a stoplight on the screen will appear, one minute, green, yellow, one minute and red when your time has ended. Thank you for taking the time to be here. Oh, okay. We'll start with the, we'll start with the one online. Shannon, you're, you're good to go. Alright, you hear me? Hello? Is anybody there? Sounds like I got a... Possible call or back. We'll try to get ahold of them again. Start this. Okay. Alright, we'll jump into it. Lisa Pepperd? Floor is yours. I don't get a lot of phone calls.
Hello? Hello?
Alright, you're on.
Thank you. My name is Shannon Wakeman. The board began discussing strategic, can you hear me?
Yes, yep, you're good.
The board began discussing strategic plan objectives at the retreat on June 4th. The first goal for students includes the words safe, known and valued and are a reiteration of the district's vision statement. All KSD kids are known well, safe and destined to reach their highest potential. Mr. Valentine referred to the word safe, known and valued used in the goals and vision statement as quote fluffy and once then replaced. Let's unpack these fluffy words using some synonyms so we can make sure the district isn't leading kids astray. Safe, appear, protected, sheltered, unharmed, good, dependable, all right, well. Known, understood, accepted, acknowledged, familiar, recognized, celebrated, identified. Valued, appreciated, respected, esteemed, regarded, preserved, enjoyed, cherished, admired. I had to insert an informal dictionary for Mr. Valentine's use of the word fluffy. Fluffy, frivolous, fake, not real, irrelevant, unnecessary, pointless, not important, light and not serious, having no substance, depth or power. Being safe, known and valued are basic human needs and drive motivation for learning and behavior. They encompass the backbone of supportive environment for students in any education setting. They are not irrelevant, unnecessary, frivolous or pointless. Mr. Valentine also asked, where is the word excellence in the strategic plan? As for the word excellence, read the last part of the vision statement, destined to reach their highest potential. Highest potential refers to the greatest ability or capacity to succeed or achieve something significant. It indicates a strong likelihood of future success. What else is that but the spirit of excellence? I am proud of KSD and their exemplary strategic plan. Please don't put students at risk by changing it on a whim or bias.
Thank you. Lisa, you are, you are...
I was really sad to miss your party. It feels like a million years ago that I was part of the selection committee that chose you and I whole, you were wholeheartedly my choice. I'm sad that you're leaving. And I just wanted to publicly acknowledge you for your hard work and your dedication to the kids of this district. For your grace, who would have ever imagined what this, these five years would have looked like? You have big shoes to fill and I wish you all the best on your retirement. Thank you for choosing to finish your career here. I wish you all the best.
Thank you, Lisa. Next up, Mike Luzzo?
I'm Mike Luzzo, I'm here in Kennewick. I'm candidate for District One. I talked to the education, the union about two days ago and I've been bothering Dr. Pierce and Dr. Broadway for about two weeks and just bringing up things. Last several years I've been working out of the ports trying to get things done within the city of Kennewick. Just, I was asked, I recently introduced myself to City Council, or rather, School Board, I'd say City Council, because I've paid for City Council and City of Russell about three times. But that's essentially who I am and I'm probably gonna be bothering your staff and Patty Lard and whoever else for the next little while. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Alright, moving along. Next up, consent items. I will take a motion to approve.
I will move to accept the consent items as presented.
Thank you, Mike. Patty, the roll call vote, please.
Mr. Connors?
Yes.
Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Gladhill?
Yes.
Mr. Valentine?
I'm staying.
Mr. Galbraith?
Yes. Alright, next up, communication, follow-up. We will start the last one here. Dr. Pierce?
I just have one, one quick one. I wanted to follow up on the status of the Kamikin High School drama class to let you know that Principal Chris Chellin let me know that the class now has 28 students registered and it will be run for the 25, 26 school year. So that's good news.
Alright, let's jump right into superintendent and board member reports. We will kick it off with you.
Alright, well, I, I think we've had a really strong finish to the school year. I was able to finish up my school visits to MCP Delta, Kennewick High School, Sage Crest, JJC in Phoenix. So those were my final visits of the year. We've had a number of great events since the last board meeting that I just wanted to, to highlight with the awards ceremony, or Tri-Tech had their awards ceremony where Representative Connors was honored for sponsoring and working to pass House Bill 1414 and 1722 to improve CTE student access to career opportunities. We had our all KSD staff retirement reception. We were able to honor our Benton Franklin retirees at the Seawasa Honorary Awards Banquet. The Team Reed Volunteer Appreciation Event was held here with all the great Team Reed volunteers. I was able to share a few words of thanks. On behalf of the district and the board, we had Highlands and Park, I got to the Highlands dual language celebration, so recognizing all the students who've come up through the dual language program and are now graduating as eighth graders. as eighth graders, and that was really fun. Of course, we had amazing graduation ceremonies that were awesome, and then, we'll get to this a little bit later in the, as an agenda item, but we were able to interview the four candidates for student board representative-elect, and so we have a recommendation for that. And then, I want to make sure this meeting doesn't end before I have a few minutes to say a few words about Matt Scott, who is our Assistant Superintendent of K-12. And as you all know, Matt Scott is also retiring. And so, I, I just want to say a few things. You know, I've had the pleasure of working really closely with Matt for the, the last six years. I've, I've been a superintendent for 12 years, and during that time, I've had the good fortune to work with some, you know, extremely talented and hardworking leaders as cabinet members, and Matt is one of those individuals. And he has had a very long career here in KSD, and I don't know if everybody realizes that, you know, he started long before I ever got here, and he's going to leave a very positive and lasting legacy in this district. He began his career in education in 1991 as a substitute teacher in Great Falls, Montana. Then he joined KSD as a para educator in 1993. And for three years and four months, he was a para at Park Middle School and at JJC. And then, he applied for a certificated teaching position at Park Middle and was hired there. He got the teaching job at Park Middle. He taught there, he served as a reading coordinator, a reading chair, and team leader. He was also an assistant football coach, boys and girls basketball coach, and baseball coach. He then went on to become an assistant principal at Desert Hills Middle School, and he served there for three years before becoming principal at Vista. And that was in 2005, and he continued there at Vista through 2013. And in 2014, he became the Assistant Director of Special Services here at the district, and then a year later, became the Director of Special Services. So then, in 2019, just as I was joining the district, Matt was hired to serve as Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum Assessment and Professional Development. So, during the time I've been here, I've had the opportunity to continue to see Matt lead and learn and serve this district. So, so much so, that is, what was it, three years in, I asked Matt if he would take on a new role as the Assistant Superintendent of K-12 Education. And so, he's been in that position for the past three years, and he's really continued to shine as a leader in that position. He is knowledgeable, you guys know that. He's professional, he's got a real solid understanding of district history and context. He's very collaborative, he's very focused on results. He's a great cabinet team member, he's a trusted team member, he's highly valued, he's often sought after for his, you know, guidance opinion on, on multiple things. I really appreciate his intelligence, his commitment, he's got a great sense of humor, and he produces high-quality work. He's got his fingerprints on, on lots and lots of things, as you can imagine. And so, I just want to note, you know, during just the past few years, really guiding, leading, supporting the new K-12 team of directors, because we've had some new people coming into the district with new positions in elementary and secondary education, in special services, and in student services. And when the safety officer program was, you know, coming into fruition with the levy passing, Matt was very instrumental in getting that program up and running. And so, you think about that legacy that he'll leave as well. He's had a long and successful career here in KSD. I wish him all the best in his next chapter, and I just want to make sure he knows the gratitude and admiration that he has of his colleagues and just the, the respect of the KSD community. So, Matt, thank you for your service, and happy retirement to you.
So, anyway, I am also a joke. Really, seven graduations, I went to TRITech for the award ceremony, I also went to the signing, TRITech signing for the kids going on to the workforce. That was a good, good program, would have liked to see a little higher turnout there, because I think it's, I'm not sure what happened, we only had about 15, 16 kids come through. But I really liked that, because, you know, they need to be celebrated as much as everyone else. These kids going out there, ready to go take on a job, I think is really key. So, anyway, lots of handshaking, but it was really good to see these kids cross the stage. So, you know, that's it.
Yeah, similar to Mike, a lot of graduations, multiple graduations. Got to enjoy the Kamaiken Senior Party, which was very late at night. I realized I'm not young anymore, and just really proud of all the kids that have graduated. I, I think they're, they're going to be great representatives of, of who we are as a district, and go for it, and I'm excited to see the things they accomplish. Also wanted to tell Matt, thank you so much for all that you've done. You've been a huge asset to our district. We look forward to your presentations at each board meeting, the captivating, no, but there, the, the information you give us is, is critical, and, and your oversight and your direction, and, and just making sure that, that we're getting as much information as we need. But even more importantly, you're, you're managing the district with Tracy, and it, it's really been a pleasure to work with you. So, thank you so much for all of your efforts, and enjoy, enjoy your retirement. Sounds like you've got some fun things planned.
Yes, so I had, just ahead of graduation, had the chance to go and be interviewed by a team from Carnegie Learning. They are the publishers for our newly adopted clear math curriculum. So, Dave Elkins, who was one of the district math specialists, was asked to kind of coordinate an effort from Carnegie Learning. They were interested in coming to Kennewick School District and doing some interviews on how our adoption was going. And I, I think this came about because my daughter's teacher was, is quite an excellent math teacher, and so she was going to be interviewed, and they wanted a student and parent perspective, and so my daughter and I were invited to go and do a little interview. So, it was very fun, we got to sit side by side and had bright lights and microphones on us, and we felt important for five minutes, and got to talk about how much we have enjoyed clear math in our home. So, it was really fun to be able to do that. Attended a number of graduations last weekend. Was, was a great and busy year, weekend. And then, I had a chance late last week to help interview the student reps, the student rep candidates and make that selection, and so we're excited for the recommendation that we have for the board today. And then, also had a chance yesterday to participate in a little bit of a, just an interview with some possible attorney candidates, so. Oh, and Matt. My first introduction to Matt was as a school board director candidate, and really appreciated how generous and kind Matt was to me, who really didn't know nothing and is still learning an awful lot. And I had three questions for him at that time. I wanted to know what is the biggest concern for administrators, what is the biggest concern for teachers, and what is the biggest concern for students? And without hesitation, he had a ready answer for me on all three of those things. And I knew then that he understood the district well, and that he would be an excellent resource for me as a school board director and for really everyone in the district. So, thank you, thank you so much for your many years of service.
Mr. Valentine?
All right, thank you. I had a chance to visit Lincoln Elementary, a job fair, actually, my wife and I got to go, we each have our jobs, and we got to do that, it was kind of fun. Leanne Persol from the Children Reading Foundation contacted me this, this week to tell me, talk to me actually about the, our, our lunch and food program that we're building. Big thanks to Christine Benson and her staff at Sodexo again, they're working very hard. The summer program is, is ready to roll out, it's, it's all ready to go, so we're really excited. Lunches are going to be awesome, and now we're kind of working on breakfasts right now. Lots of graduations, of course, personnel meetings, interviews, interviewing with our, our lawyer, anyway, and, and our student rep. When, I'm really excited about this particular student rep, I think this person's going to be very fun, and I'm excited for everybody to meet this person, and it's, it's, she's going to be great. I don't want to get too much away, but she's great.
Is that it?
That's it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Graduations, of course. I do want to, I do want to say, though, congratulations to, to these four board members. I got to watch from a perspective of not having a kid graduate, but watched these four all welcome their either oldest child or last child across the stage, and it, it's just a, it's a, it's a beautiful moment, and I'm glad you guys had the opportunity to share it with, with your, with your kids, so congratulations. Also want to say thank you to Sodexo and the team for providing food and beverages for Dr. Pierce's retirement ceremony we had before this, and then last, early last Friday, there was a, had a district luncheon, came down here, everybody was enjoying hamburgers and hot dogs and having fun, and so that was, that was great to see everybody interacting there. Tried to get into the math training, across the street, door was locked, they probably heard I was coming, so they, they hit the lock button, but, you know, it, it happens. And last but not least, Matt, I got nothing for you. No, I mean, seriously, everybody shared a lot of great qualities about you, Matt. You will be missed in this district for sure. Your experience just leaving, and all that history and knowledge and experience with this district will be missed and is irreplaceable. So, thank you so much for your, your work, and enjoy retirement, so. All right, that leads us to our public hearing. Public hearing of proposed 25, 26 budget, as well as a resolution and adoption of proposed budget. So, Dr. Brillhart.
I'm just going to tee, tee it up for Dr. Brillhart here. So, as you mentioned, this is our public hearing to adopt the 25, 26 budget. One of our goals, as you know, is to be innovative, proactive, and accountable, and so we take this job very seriously of ensuring fiscal responsibility. And so, all throughout the spring, as you know, Dr. Brillhart has been presenting budget information, and tonight is the board taking action on the proposed budget. So, I just want to highlight this again, when we kind of unpack these goals, this particular one talks about effective and efficient in our operations and responsible stewards of public resources. So, again, we take that responsibility very seriously here in KSD. And so, the agenda for tonight, for the public hearing, is to do the staff presentation, which Dr. Brillhart will do. There's an opportunity for public comment following the staff presentation, so people can, during the public hearing, at that point in time, make comment either for or against the budget. Then, the, will be the board's opportunity for discussion and deliberation before you take action. So, at this point in time, Mr. Galbraith, would you please call the public hearing to order?
Yes. The public hearing on the proposed 2025, 2026 budget for the Kennewick School District will now come to order. Everyone wishing to be heard for or against the proposed budget will be given an opportunity to speak at the conclusion of the presentation. If you are listening remotely, there is a sign up form that you can sign up on, and we will call you to speak. And so, at this time, Dr. Brillhart, please present the budget.
Good evening, everybody. It's a pleasure to be here. I feel like it's been, been a few months of us kind of getting to first base, second base, third base, and now we're grounding and heading for home. So, it's exciting to present this, and honestly, you know, kind of seeing the, the program activities and the celebrations of our kids and our, our staff, this is why we do this, because without resources, without adequate funding, you know, we, we can't enhance that those programming. So, so ultimately, that's, that's our goal, obviously, get kids that graduate, across that graduation stage, and then also provide the best education we possibly can, and, but you got to have resources, they'll do that. So, so tonight's presentation, we're going to kind of follow this, this theme, the first thing we're going to talk about is enrollment projections, and then also our budget summary of all funds, our revenue budgets, our wage and benefit trends, our expenditure budget for MSOC, and then also our 2025, 26 general fund budget in totality, and then also our four-year projected budget as well for, for our general fund. And then, we'll do a highlight of our various funds as well, such as debt service and capital projects. So, first and foremost, let's talk about our biggest factor when it comes to monies, and that, of course, is enrollment. Enrollment drives everything, Dollar Fathers and Scholar, and this, this has not changed since our last presentation. As you can see in what we call basic ed funding, or basic at student FTE, we are projecting to be down about 60 students in total, but, but again, our ALE numbers are looking to be higher for next year. So, trending wise, in totality, again, we're trending to be up about 39 students in, in total. So, but again, the ALE students, it's not necessarily like restricted, but it kind of somewhat is, because it has to obviously support those programs, so. Any questions on that? Again, no changes from, from last, last month. So, here's our budget summary of all funds for 25, 26, and of course, we'll be going through these individually, one at a time. So, in, in total of our, our general fund, which of course is our biggest factor, we are budgeting revenues come, come, or September 1st, I'm sorry, of 330,555,522. And then also expenses to be 339,684,735, to have a change in fund balance of an expected over the course of the 25, 26 school year of 6.1 million dollars. We did also kind of follow the same theme in preparing to have the availability to do a inter-fund transfer up to $2 million from general to capital. Again, we have that currently in the 25, 24, 25 budget. So, what we could see, if we did do that internal transfer, we could see a deficit of 8.1 million, which we are looking at starting our fund balance come September 1 at roughly about 62 million. That's what we're trending as of right now, and again, I'll, I'll, I'll explain that here in a little bit. So, if our deficit is 8.1, again, we are expecting to end about 53 million in cash balance, so. And again, I'll, I'll kind of lay out a little bit more details on the, on the other various funds. So, let's talk about revenues first. So, the way we presented this was maybe a little bit different than what you've seen in the past. We tried to model our slides very similar and organize them to where, to what we actually have to present to OSPI in our F-195 report. So, so how they're organized is, that's, that's the reason behind that. So, this is exactly how our, our, our revenues, how we have to present to OSPI, and of course, obviously, that, that then has to be approved by them. So, in breaking down our federal revenues, which includes a lot of our, most of this is our sped money that we receive from the federal government, but also E-rate, which obviously is, is embedded into a lot of our technology expenses, Title I, Title II, Medicaid. In total, we're looking at 30.6 million for that. Local property tax, which is primarily EPNO, is a little over 24 million. Local, local support non-tax, which is mainly some of our fees, investments, donation rentals, is 2.4. That also does include E-cap as well, which is a, which is a big, the main portion of that is E-cap, which is somewhat of a pass-through, if you will. Revenues from other entities such as ESD, TRITech would be included in there as well, which again, a lot of that is somewhat pass-through. It's 493,000 revenues from other, other districts, which would, which would be any primarily, primarily schools that we end up, sorry, I've got a little cheek notes here. SRC primarily is that, our Science Resource Center, which again, is kind of somewhat of a, of a pass-through. Those are monies that we, we earn from the science packets that we actually, you know, distribute out to the local schools, and of course, that helps fund our SRC program. And then our state revenues and general apportionment, that's again, our biggest factor with, and again, that's all driven off of, off of student enrollment. And then other state revenues and special grants, which of course, we do get money from the state for, to help support sped, and of course, we get matching dollars for that, which would be, which is roughly about 66 million. Any questions on this slide? So, let's talk about wage and benefit trends. So, again, a lot of this is redundant from our last presentation. So, IPD, of course, from the state is set at 2.5% between last year and this year. We, of course, are decreasing the amount per employee that we have to contribute for retirement. Again, we reported that last month, but unfortunately, we are having to increase the amount per employee for health insurance costs for, for plans. So, as of right now, we're paying $14,136 per employee. It's going to go up to 15, 15,684, which is an increase of about $1,500. So that's, that's pretty significant. So as I reported last month, it pretty much wipes out the quote unquote savings that you're going to see from the, from the decrease in retirement. But then with staffing, so with staffing for budgeted certified staffing FTE, we're looking to be a total up of about 1.23 FT. And of course, a lot of this, you have to look at it is, is not only bodies, but also hours as well. So if we have moved someone from six hours to seven hours as a secretary, for instance, so that's, that's where you see that coming in for, on that. Budgeted classified staffing in total is up 6.55. Now a couple, couple position I wanted to kind of highlight of why that's up is for instance, like our legal counsel. We of course had a contracted service previous years, now that is an FTE. So that obviously contracted service expense just kind of shifting in, in, in that realm. So if that makes sense. Also our, our PRO officer, that wasn't, we currently have that person, but it wasn't necessarily budgeted in the 2425. But of course, now it is going to be budgeted in 2526. And then some, most, most of our CTE and various sped staffing for, for certified staffing, we're only, we're only up about 0.63. And then also for classified staffing, we're up about 1.64. And some of that has to do with our expansion of our, our CEET program. So of course, that has taken effect. So any questions on staffing? Okay. All right, so let's talk about expenditures. So this is where of course our, our management is key. So again, we broke this out to a very similar fashion to what, how we have to report to, to the state. So everything is broken out into special programming. So we have our, our regular instruction, which is the brunt of our budget. Of course, this is primarily expenses in the classroom, if you will. So at 177 million, we have our special, special education instruction, which is 42 million. Vocational CTE, now this of course is from grade seven through 12, all CTE program across the district of 11.7 billion. Skill center instruction, which of course is primarily TRITech. So again, that's almost kind of pass through expenses and, and revenues is at 6.4 million. Compensatory education, which of course you have all these labeled underneath, anything from LAP to migrant to, to some special ed within there, 24 million. And then compensatory education and instruction, we have limited English proficiency and transitional bilingual, that is sitting at 5.4 million. And then other instructional programs such as summer school, high cap, some other local grants that we receive, this total 3.6 million. And community service such as again, E-cap, we talked about that earlier. And other community services such as some, some of the monies that we have to spend on after school transportation. For instance, we want to get kids to a program or a game or whatever that may be, we're at 3.6 million there. And then other support services, anything outside the, the classroom primarily, this is staffing cost is 64 million. Of course, that is, you know, like our, our business office, maintenance, IT, food service, so on and so forth. Any questions on expenditures? So expenditures again, total 339 million. So let's talk about some of the things that we've, we've discussed. If you remember this slide, it's kind of been our updating slide, if you will, over the, over the course of, since March. So not a whole lot has changed on this particular slide. Now, now one thing I do want to remind the board, when, when we present, when I presented this back in May, the biennial budget was done, but a lot of the tools from OSPI in order to actually punch numbers in and figure out, okay, exactly what revenues, what expenses are going to be for each one of these categories was not finished yet, had not been released yet. So that's some, some of the updates or inaccuracies, if you will, that's, that's why behind that. One thing I did want to highlight, and I was talking to Tracy about this, for, I cannot recall why I did not include EPNO in our total last month. There was a reason for it, I just can't find my notes for that. So, so that 5.42 million, I did not change that, but I did want to make a special note, that is, that does not include the increase in EPNO monies that, that we will receive for next year. Okay, just want to make a special note of that. So this total increase of 10.96 million, that does include the EPNO. And then also, if I refer back to what I said earlier, the biggest difference, this 3.7 million is again, those new calculations that we were able to do between May 21st and, and today with the accuracy of our, of the tools, again, that were released by OSPI. So it's ma- mainly was apportionment primarily. But of course, we, we just finished our food service budget last week and then we did end up getting a little bit more money at a lap and bilingual than what we had expected in, in May. Any questions on that? Okay. Let's talk about primarily preliminary staff and non-staff cost changes. So we do have some updates to hear. So one thing I did want to note, if you remember in this section right here, I talked about our, our legal counsel and like PROs and some of our other various positions. Again, those, those were not accounted for on May 21st, but that's where that, that difference is right there. So our basic ed local, local state funded related costs change again, in total from, from us being able to just get more finite with our, with our numbers changed from 3.8 million to 4.25 million in, in total costs, which again, were some of those positions primarily. That again, we just did not report, report on on the 21st. So in total, what we are looking at as of right now for our 2425 current budget as of right now, we're looking at having revenues over expenditures by year end of about a little over 6 million. That's what we're trending at right now, which is, which is a good thing. One of the reasons why again, we're expecting our cash balance to be close to 62 million by the time we start this year's next budget. Okay. But the unfortunate thing is if our expenditure trend continues as projected, we're looking at potentially having a shortfall of 6.1 million at the end of 2026. Okay. And again, take it, take into account too, that does not account the, the needed $2 million capital project transfer that we need to, need, honestly need to do and be responsible to do, just to make sure we maintain our buildings properly. So. Any questions on that? So let's talk about IMSOC real quick. So not a lot has changed on this slide. The only updates that we had, as I mentioned earlier, we did not have our food service budget finished back in May. So that is our IMSOC budget for food service at 7.2 million. We did keep a contingency of 2.5 million, that is no different than last year. So in total, our, and I apologize in small print, our total IMSOC budget is at 50,566,369, which is an increase of about $2.6 million. And I want to highlight that for the next slide. So this is something we have to report to the state, kind of breaking out how much money we actually get from the state in IMSOC and how much money within our IMSOC expenditures are local funded, or local supported. So this is the amount of money that we get for this budget. This is the amount that we have to basically generate and other funds, hence local dollars. So that the additional 1.4 million that we're getting from the state, again, that was that $81 per student increase, doesn't even come close to covering what we're expecting at 2.7 million almost of, of expenses. And for the most part, we were pretty aggressive and conservative, if you will, on a lot of our projections based upon again, either actuals and whether they're contracted actuals, obviously make a lot of phone calls, doing a lot of deep diving and just making sure that again, we, we are being as drilled down as possible a lot of, with a lot of these, these IMSOC expenditures. So that is definitely something to note and be of concern. And of course, some of the biggest, biggest increases, not a big surprise, utility costs are going up. I think I reported back, we're expecting about a 5% increase across the board for utility costs, anything from water to electric to, to gas. And then our prop casualty insurance, we're expecting to go up just under 8%. So. Any questions? Okay. So general fund budget, so what we did, we laid this out as a comparison from last year to this year. So obviously 2425, that is exactly what my predecessor presented to you guys. As you can see, we presented, Vic presented a 5.5 million budget shortfall. And again, we are projecting for this budget to be at 6.1 million. And again, I went through the majority of these, but again, if you have any questions on any of these items, just, just let me know. The, the biggest factor, of course, the biggest portion of our budget, just like any other school district, is, is staffing cost when it comes to salaries and benefits. It makes up about 85 to 86% of our total budget cost, which is a good thing. But that's something that we obviously have to continually monitor and make sure that we control that as well. So that, that's where you can get out of hand real quick. So. Any questions on this? Okay. Our four year budget trend, so again, looking at to the best of our ability, projecting out to obviously looking at our 2526 budget, but then also looking out an additional three years. Now of course, full disclosure, it's just like kicking a field goal, you're going to be really accurate at 10 yards and not very accurate at 30 yards and 15 and so on and so forth. So, so again, this is as best as we possibly can get drilled, drilled down to. So what we are looking at trending, again, this is, this is just how the math is working right now. We're looking at enrollment potentially dropping roughly about 100 students each year, which obviously that does have a big impact on your, your apportionment, which again, is obviously enrollment is our biggest factor. So one of the things I do want to highlight on this, on this four year projection is our revenues, again, that's something I highlighted earlier, our revenues for apportionment, that is matching what we expect to get from the states. And of course, we don't know exactly outside of this biennial budget, how much they're going to fund each student. But those revenues are matching that, that enrollment trend. But our expense trend in primarily in staffing is assuming no cuts. So I just want to make sure I highlight that. So is that going to be our reality? Maybe, maybe not. It's hard to project that because, just because a certain school loses 20 kids or 30 kids or 50 kids, you don't know if you're going to be able to decrease staffing because you got to think about programming, you got to think about balancing classes as well and scheduling. So again, I just want to make sure I highlight that, that is assuming staffing remains, staffing cost remains the same. Okay. So no cuts there. Another thing I did want to highlight, so you know, I'll get to this on the next slide. Obviously, we're going to start preparing for our next EPNO in February. So one of the things I do want to highlight on, for our EPNO, that is based upon a tax calendar year, but it doesn't follow the same math as our budget year, of course. So, so our first EPNO, which is what we presented back in April at the work session. So this, this technically, this is our, our 2027 calendar year for tax collections. Okay. But that is, but these numbers are not going to match because again, it's, it's robbing a little previous of the previous calendar year and this calendar year, if that makes sense. So that's where that, these numbers are not going to match. All right. But I just want to make sure I explain that as we move forward. So the biggest thing and the biggest story we're going to be able to tell tonight is if enrollment does what we're projecting it to do, if our expenditures remain on the same trend, which is about a 3% increase, which is pretty modest to, to project that on expenditures. If you see what our cash balance does as of September 1 of 2026, if we, if we are able to levy what we think we're, we're going to be able to levy, assuming some of the items for revenues such as LEA, and again, what we're going to hopefully be able to get for, for apportionment, we're still looking at chipping away at our cash balance to, as of here in a few months, we're projecting at 62 million and four years later, potentially being as low as 21 million. So again, that's something that we have to keep on our radar because unfortunately that, the, the ship can steer that way very quickly. So we just don't ever want to go down that, that lane. So. Any questions on this slide? And I'll, I'll refer back to it on the next couple of slides, just to kind of make sure things match. So again, back in April, we had a study session about the EPNO levy. Now full disclosure, at that time, we did not have good data yet from the county assessor on what we thought our AV was going to be. We have that data now. So a lot of these numbers are going to change to what we are projecting moving forward. And that's a good thing because again, we're always trying to be more accurate and obviously, you know, make sure that we're doing, we're asking taxpayers to support something with as best accurate information as we possibly can for transparency and understanding and validation. But the one thing that you will notice, a difference on when I compare what we presented back in April versus what I'm going to present tonight, this sum, this gap, if you will, of what we need to make up our IMSOC loss or like I said, our, our other expenditures, that sum isn't really changing that much based upon projections. What is changing is what we expect to get in LEA funding, because if you remember back in April, again, the budget wasn't done yet, or the biennial budget wasn't done yet. So we are actually getting an increase in LEA funding and also our, our AV should not raise as much as what was expecting and or trending like we had presented back in April, which that's, that's a good thing. So and another thing I want to note, and again, I'll kind of flip back and forth to this page, our tax rate, again, projecting because we needed to levy such a, a large EPNO and, and even though our AV, we expected to grow, at that time, we were projecting a buck 90, going from roughly today about a buck 51 to a buck 91, 203 and 211. Okay. Now with new information, new updated numbers, because we know our LEA funding is going to increase, again, we don't know exactly how much because this is roughly about two years out, this is three years, or I'm sorry, this is about three years out roughly, uh, uh, four years out and almost five years out. But we think again, conservatively, that we can count on our LEA to be roughly about 16 and a half million. Okay, with the best numbers that we have currently today. And this, this may change in, in a few months. But notice that gap is remaining close to be about the same. Okay. We flip back to the, to the last page. So that gap really hasn't changed a whole lot because again, our, our expenses and our, and our revenues are, are, are trending this way. Okay. But what it does do, because we had, we're more dialed in on our AV and we're not having to ask for as large of a bond to support our, our kids, notice the difference in what we, what we think we're now going to be able to, to I guess strategize with and make sure that again, we can survive with, this went down dramatically because primarily our LEA has went up, is now it drives down our tax rate to be expected to be closer to a buck 73 to a buck 78 to a buck 78, which is dramatically lower than our, than our neighbors. Okay. That's a good thing. It's a good thing for our taxpayers and a good thing for our community. So. Any, any questions on those two slides?
I have a question, but that's good.
Yes, that was good. Yeah, that's good. And again, as we keep marching forward to October or November, this will be our focus because again, we just want to be as accurate as we possibly can. So. Okay, we're going to start diving into our various funds. So a lot, most of these have not changed since the last time I presented, last month. So debt service fund's pretty straightforward, we pay our debt, pay off our bonds. Again, the one thing I do want to note though, is you'll see, it looks like we're going to have a debt, a deficit of 2.6 million. That is true because of how we get our revenues versus when our expenses are. Okay. But if you look at it over the course of a 12 month period, if dates weren't an issue over a 12 month period, we're, we're fine. Okay, we are not going to be in deficit spending. So obviously we ask to basically just pay our mortgage, to pay our bills and that's all we ask for. So, but again, on paper, because of the timing again of our, of our payments, we are, like I said, we're looking to be down now. Now the one thing I do want to note, again, I kind of brought this up at our last meeting. So this is our, this is our, our total obligation for next year is 19.3 million. So if you look, our debt service obligation drops dramatically from this budget year to the next budget year, which means tax rates drop dramatically from this year to that year, which is good. Again, it's good timing, especially when we're going for an EPNO. So that's something, again, we just need to make sure that we continually highlight and we make sure that people know, know the full story. Okay. And it continues to drop, unless we add debt later in the future, but it continues to drop again from 14 to 13 to, to 13.5 to just above 13, or just above 13. So any questions on debt service? Okay. Capital projects fund, again, none of this has changed since our last, last presentation. Again, the, the brunt majority of this is TRITech. Again, those are monies obviously we're getting from that state grant, using for that modernization of TRITech. Monies we, we spend, we get reimbursed and again, it's just some, somewhat of a pass through. So. So any, there were no changes on capital projects. Transportation fund, again, no changes there either. Again, the one thing I do still remind the board and just highlight, as of right now, we see no expenses in the current 2425 budget. Yet that may change and we'll make sure we keep the board apprised of that because as of right now, we're still on pause on whether or not we're actually going to purchase buses this budget year. Okay, we may actually, may actually wait till next, next budget year, which was reflected with this slide. And then self insurance fund, of course, this is what we collect for work comp and unemployment. This is something I did not present on last, last month. So right now, our self insurance fund, we're looking at revenues to be collected of about 1.8 million, expenses of about 2.8 million, which again, is looking, looking like we're going to be in deficit spending of about a million dollars in our self insurance fund. And that's okay, because this total fund balance is really truly what we, what we monitor and what we look at. We got to make sure that we stay above about 3.5 to 3.7 in order to basically pay our obligations. And of course, bad thing about self insurance, you don't really know what those obligations are going to be because it's all based upon past, past conditions and, and issues. So, but again, we got to make sure we keep that above 3.5 at least. So. Any questions on self insurance? All right, ASB, of course, this is monies that our schools get to spend and raise. And again, as of right now, our revenue, our budget revenues for all of our collective ASB funds are 3.3 million and expenses are 3.6 million. That doesn't mean that they will spend 3.6 That doesn't mean that they will spend three point six collectively. It just means they have the authorization to spend collectively at the three point six million. So this, uh, this deficit of three hundred and six thousand, um, I'm not too concerned about that because again, we can, we can control that. Uh, just means collectively across all ASB funds of all of our schools, again, they're, they're authorized to spend collectively at the three point six. Any questions on ASB? Okay, that ends my presentation and I would be remiss if I didn't, uh, make sure that I mentioned that none of this would have been possible without the work of that young lady right there, uh, Legend, and also Mr. Brandon Lord, who conveniently decided to go on vacation, you know, when he was doing budget presentations, but you know, but I don't know who his mom is, but, uh, but whatever. So, but no, without them, without that team, uh, uh, we wouldn't be here, uh, where we're at tonight and be as dialed in as we are tonight. So like I said, I got to give her special recognition and Brandon as well, they've done a great job. And obviously, um, as dorky as it sounds, this is fun, this is enjoyable for me, but it's more fun working with them, uh, just because their great attitudes and, and just, uh, their willingness just to do whatever is asked of them. So thank you, thank you, Brandon, for listening, so.
He's not listening, guys.
Yeah, he's not listening, so.
All right.
Thank you.
If, if anyone in the audience would like to comment on the proposed twenty-five, twenty-six budget, please raise your hand to be recognized at this time. You will be asked to come forward to the podium, provide, and provide your comment. Please begin by stating your name for the record. Anyone in the audience wish to comment? And, and you will have, uh, two, two minutes, similar to communicate, or the way we do communication.
One thing I didn't see in, um, the presentation was, um, if bad things go wrong with the, um, housing industry. In other words, the real estate drops in values and stuff. And, um, um, maybe that's been considered, but I didn't see it. And, um, I, I am seeing indications from various places that housing prices are dropping. So, and, and we have had that in the past, I've lived here since ninety-five and stuff. And as soon as we bought our place, it promptly dropped ten thousand dollars. So, but that's, you know, that happens all the time and stuff. But I just offer that, um, um, we have to, um, have a cushion to deal with that. And, um, we can't always be going back to the well to say, taxpayer pay up and stuff. And our, our kids are, are very important and stuff. They're our future, but, um, I just offer, consider that.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you. I always forget that. Uh, Jeanne Pauline, Kennewick, okay?
Thank you, Jeanne.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else care to comment? Yes, sir.
Uh, hello, I am, my name is Jack Fair. Um, and so my thoughts here are, I noticed we're, there's quite a lot of, uh, pretty hefty difference between the expenditures and the revenues. And I think that, um, uh, that lady, uh, came up before me, raised a very good point of housing prices may be comparatively inflated right now compared to, and we might see that drop considering the, um, high interest rates cause, um, having a, uh, that are expected to be quite protracted, having a potentially negative effect on the demand for housing, which might cause a drop in value. And considering there's already a six million dollar difference, uh, between these revenues and expenditures, I, I think it's a fairly concerning, uh, matter. And, uh, I think I'd recommend a lot more scrutiny in terms of, uh, budget because it, it's an unsustainable trend at the moment and may become even worse. Uh, so that's just, that's my thought on that.
Right. Thank you, Jack, appreciate it. Anyone else in attendance? Is there anyone attending online who would like to comment or? All right. Last call for any person who wishes to speak for or against the proposed twenty-five, twenty-six budget. All right, I will now entertain a motion to adjourn the hearing.
I will go ahead and make a motion to, uh, adjourn the meeting. Starting the.
Just the hearing.
At the meeting.
I'm sorry.
Yes, you're right.
Yeah, I'm doing both.
You're talking here.
I'm doing both.
Uh, no, adjourn the, uh, the hearing for the twenty-five, twenty-six budget.
Great. Patty with the roll call vote, please.
Mr. Connors?
Yes.
Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Glatchell?
Yes.
Mr. Valentine?
Yes.
And Mr. Galbraith?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, the floor is open for any discussion on the budget.
Do we want to, do we want to give, uh, Tom a chance to address the, the, the two comments that were related to the home, home housing?
Yes, um, so we, as I stated earlier, um, we met with the assessor's office and learned quite a bit, honestly, on what to, what to, uh, expect, I guess, you know, in the now, what, what's happening in the, in the past. And so, um, so currently, right now, the county is split into six, um, sections of how they assess properties. And of course, it's all based upon home sales from the previous year. Um, and of course, they're, again, working with as much updated data as, as, as provided to them. And so, um, our, our, the majority of this KSD school district that has the most AV will not be assessed, I mean, you might if I backed up this, will not be reassessed until this year, okay? So it'd be twenty twenty-eight, the majority, about, it's about roughly about two-thirds of our, of our, uh, uh, AV, not, not parcels of our AV. Um, about a quarter of our, um, parcels be reassessed up to market value in this year. Yeah, yeah, assessed up to market value, yeah, yeah, I need to, uh, say that, uh, more clearly. And then in the, in twenty-nine, uh, twenty-nine, thirty, uh, the majority of the parcels, which is primarily all the agriculture south of town, all the way to the river, will be reassessed, which, which doesn't carry a lot of AV for us, uh, just because it's, it's undeveloped land, of course. So, so really, what we are projecting, uh, because we know that, again, how the county operates now, uh, what we're projecting is possibly a hike in AV this year would, would be, would be twenty-seven, twenty-eight, okay? Depending on what the market is doing in the previous year, of course. Um, so, so again, we'll be as dialed in as we possibly can be. Um, and again, that, that works kind of fun, I, I, you know, I, I enjoy doing that. Um, but again, it's kind of, uh, it's kind of hard to, to guess right now, you know, just because there's so many factors as, as, uh, these folks were alluding to earlier. Uh, but that's how the cycle works in, in Benton County. So, you know, as long as we know that and we, and we can prepare for that, um, you know, we can, we can be obviously as more accurate or more conservative that you will and be cautious, for instance, in this budget year, for instance, because maybe we think AV is going to dramatically increase and LEA is going to go down, for instance, so, um, so, yeah.
One, one thing that just I should say is, we, we also ask Tom to be as conservative as he can with, uh, with those numbers, right? Guessing high in some cases and low in other cases, so, like I said, a pretty, it project out, looks bad because of the projections, but, um, but as we get closer and they tighten up, they seem to kind of.
Yes, yeah. And, and another thing I would highlight, so, um, so this cash balance of sixty-two million, um, which is, which is good, that's healthy, it's very healthy, as, as noted, but obviously, I, I can't take credit, that, that is Dr. Pierce's leadership and Vic and the team and so on and so forth. I mean, that is, that is great, but it still isn't what OSPI projects as being healthy when, when they're saying, okay, if you want a ranking of four for efficiency, you got to have at least ninety days of cash in hand to match your expenses. So for a district our size, it's about eighty-five million, just to meet their expectations of being solvent, if you will. So, um, so, yeah, so I mean, it's, it's, it's great, I mean, but.
Does anybody want to ask them why they don't advocate for more M-SOC funding?
Washington right now are ranking the four.
I, 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 I can tell you that, um, so, yeah, you may have it up already.
I'm assuming it's not very.
It's not very, no, it's not, especially in that, especially in that category, um, yeah, so, but we will get that.
I'm sorry, I missed that whole thing, I was ranting to myself. So what was the answer, how many school districts are?
How many school districts are at, at, uh, level four?
Do we know that, do we know the answer?
You know, we're at three point seven.
Yeah, I mean, it's incredible. And you're going to find out. What I want, anyway, can I make a snarky comment?
Yes.
Fantastic, I'm glad that OSPI has that standard set for us. Do they want to advocate to the state legislature for us to have more M-SOC funding? Because then we would be able to have a healthier reserve fund balance.
Yes.
It, I, I, when I looked at the sheet, it's like less than thirty and they're all tiny districts.
Sure.
Like, there's, not, not, they're all in that small category, but.
Because another thing that I keep trying to highlight this too during budget discussions, but if you take a look at our expenses, the things that the school district actually has control over, we are below, we are spending less now despite inflation and everything that we have, than we have ever spent in those categories over the last three to five years. Where we are dying is on things that we have no control over, like utilities, insurance costs, those types of things. And those are things that are largely impacted by the political economic environment surrounding us. So we are actually spending way less than we have historically when you factor in inflation especially. And anyway, so, we're doing our best.
Does any, do any of our peers across the rivers have the double-digit general fund balances?
I don't, I do not believe so, sir. Can confirm it, but I don't believe so.
Oh, that's so curious, okay, all right.
I believe there was an article in the Tri-City Herald that addressed some of these things about the financial, uh, what did I say, Josh? I, I believe it, if I remember correctly, uh, we were scored at a three point seven. Um, the state average was, I believe, three. And, uh, Pasco, I think, was two-something and then Richland, I believe, was in the ones. I could be wrong on those two numbers, but I, I think to the point, um, to, to some of the points that there were made in public comment, I, I think, yes, it, it's important that we're watching this. There's only so much we can, we can predict, and we do our best to predict and we try to be very conservative about this. And this is why we spend the time, multiple meetings going through this, is trying to make sure that we are conservative. It's, it's why we're being very careful about this, this levy that we're looking to, uh, that we'll be looking to pass in the coming, coming months, um, is because there is a difference there and the levy is where we can help to compensate for some of that. Um, but, but absolutely, there are concerns, changes in the, whether it's in housing or in, I mean, we saw, I believe it was last year, a massive change in gas price with, uh, the natural gas costs went, went way up and cost several hundred thousand dollars. Things, things can change and, and really, that's why we try to keep that fund balance. People see the number and say, well, you know, sixty-two million dollars is a lot of money. It is, but that money, as you can see, and to your point, can go really fast if we're not careful and if we're not doing exactly what we're having Tom do and his team is, be very on top of this. And so I appreciate your concern because it certainly is a concern that we all share. And that is, is if things change, this can change very quickly. And that's why we need to be constantly reviewing it, which is why we do that so often. So thank you for both of your comments.
And Tom, once we, like, the, once we pass the levy, that stands for?
Not to be determined, uh, two, two, four years.
So we, we have some strategy around that, okay? But once the rates are set for that prescribed amount of time, we don't get to change the rates, right? We're starting that for.
Yeah, that, not the rate, the levy amount, yeah, levy amount.
We pass an amount.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Yeah, we, we collect an amount and then the rate will.
Depending on what the assessed value is, yeah, yeah.
And, and historically, the rate that we've projected has come in lower than we projected, um, which is typically what, you know, what we want to do versus the, the opposite.
Sure.
And it should be, and it should be said that like, that, the, the tax rate that we, that we'll probably end up proposing is going to be less than all of our neighbors and we have still a higher fund balance. So that should hopefully give a community confidence that we are asking them for less money and we're doing way, way, way more with, with less.
Yeah.
So I hope that that inspires confidence for everybody to vote for it.
Yeah, and I'm glad Tracy brought that up. So this, this buck seventy-three, buck seventy-eight, buck seventy-eight, that, that is assuming a very modest increase in AV. Again, the last five-year trend, even taking out the craziness in twenty-one, twenty-two, the last five-year trend has been eight percent. This is, I think we did, I think these are based off either two and a half or three percent. So, um, so you could definitely argue it's probably not going to be this. It's probably going to be lower than this, for sure. Again, depending on the economy, market value, I mean, so, yeah, to be determined.
All right, there's no other questions. I will, uh, entertain a motion to, uh, adopt the Kenwood School District budget through resolution number fourteen.
Although, I move to, uh, to adopt the, uh, the resolution, uh, number fourteen, but the Kenwood budget for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year.
Patty, take the roll call vote, please.
Mr. Connors?
Yes.
Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Glatchell?
Yes.
Mr. Valentine?
Yes.
And Mr. Galbraith?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, motion passes.
Nice.
Five, zero. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys, for all your hard work. All right, uh, next up, uh, we begin our reports and discussions, communications and engagement efforts. We have Robin and Matt.
Mess up, Matt.
Good evening, we're going to be talking about the communications and engagement efforts. Um, so, this falls under all families are key partners. And so under the family goal, um, if you'll recall, we had the goals of forming a communications advisory to get some feedback for the district. We also had expanding our family hub, uh, based on the feedback that we received from that committee. Under our students' goals, we had expand the family hub video library and resources and then publish a student and family-friendly path to graduation planner. And under our community goals, we had volunteerism and communication. So that included, um, regularly communicating opportunities for volunteering and then also implementing strategies to promote volunteerism and, um, increase volunteers at all of our schools. And then under community engagement in that goal, um, we had to work to ensure that all of our schools had at least one key partner organization. And this ties into our performance targets of, um, increasing the number of community volunteers at our schools. So, real quick, uh, presentation overview, we're going to talk about the communications advisory that was formed this year, um, family hub content that was added, community resources, uh, resource information that was sent out, strategies to promote volunteerism and work, um, that we did to ensure that all of our schools have at least one key partner organization. Um, some of our social media engagement efforts that we did this year and then new efforts for twenty-five and twenty-six. So, real quick, um, we formed a communications advisory to get some feedback from, um, parents in the district. And some of the content need areas that we identified fell into special education. So parents really wanting to know more about special education processes, what to expect, um, when they can ask for reevaluations, the differences between IEPs, five oh fours, some general terminology regarding special education. Um, they also wanted to know more about education acronyms that, um, teachers use and principals use. And then, um, what's expected by grade level? Um, so what will their child be learning by grade level? And knowing that at the beginning of the school year was important. Um, then also, um, homework, what to expect, um, by grade level? And I know this can vary by school and by grades. And then student conferences, what to expect in a student conference? What kind of questions parents should be asking in student conference? And what kind of information they should be looking for? And then changes that parents would need to know from school year to school year if, uh, procedures change, policies changes, or, um, the expectations change. And then what kind of social and emotional support, um, is happening at the? And then what kind of social and emotional support is happening at the school? Like behavior plans, any kind of discipline? What are these steps that the schools talk about? Just more explanation and information about that. Family Hub Video Content, the school board actually helped us identify some areas to add content in October when I came to speak with you. One was graduation requirements, graduation pathways was another, high school and beyond plan and school links, and how core curriculum, our instructional materials are selected, our clear math elementary curriculum, which is the new curriculum for K-5 students, and then power school login and uses. So one thing that we worked on this year was, and we've finished up our, what I'd call our first version of it towards the end of the school year and look forward to pushing more information out in the fall, is our graduation planner and what to expect in the high school. So these are by grade level nine, ten, eleven, twelve. They're gonna include important dates and important things that students and families should be doing, such as checking school links. And you can use this really as a checklist and these dates will obviously be updated every year. And we look forward to really expanding on this because we know that there's a lot of detail that you could put in based on the pathway that your child chooses. And so we look forward to just really expanding those and having them be a useful tool.
Two questions, two questions here. Number one is, how will these be distributed? Have you thought of that yet?
So we, we look forward to working with our school counselors. So the people that are actually, you know, meeting with the students and meeting with the families during conference time. And then also pushing these out through Parent Square is our communication vehicle. So pushing them out by grade level to those families at the beginning of the year so they know what to expect for that school year.
And then one thing I would suggest in, like, to add on to this would be pushing these into eighth grade because there's, there's some credits that eighth graders can be taking and they're always aware of those and making sure they are. And then, so I, I think almost like eighth grade is the most important grade, it seems like, to get the, to get this because now they have a year to sort of prepare and then to go into high school. So that, that would be my encouragement, recommendations, like, this is a great idea. I love, love this. Push it one more year.
Yeah, I, I, this is what I've talked about multiple times and I love this, is that it's gonna be easy. I can see there, there's stuff for students, stuff for parents and guardians. The only thing I would add is, is making sure, we probably need to give this to them twice.
Four times.
Well, what I'm, but definitely doing it one time at the, near the end of the year when you're talking about, hey, eighth graders, here's a ninth grade. And I would actually echo what was said. I think, ha, this is awesome. Can we add an eighth grade? Just because that jump from eighth grade to ninth grade, there's things they could be doing to prepare for that. So, um, it, but, but then also making sure they're getting the, for example, that the tenth grade, they're getting that at the end of the ninth grade and then again at the beginning of their tenth grade. So that you've got two times where they're looking at it, you're getting eyes on it and reviewing it. And I, I know we're gonna talk later about having the counselor sitting down and going over next steps at the end of the year because that's when, you know, when they're submitting their schedules, they need to have, have already known what's gonna go on at tenth grade, if they're a ninth grade. So, but I love this. This is awesome.
Those are great ideas. And we actually was talking to Alyssa. She had the idea of really breaking it up with, um, not seasons, but semesters, you know? And then, so I love the idea of like packaging what goes out in each semester at that time of the year and pushing that out. So this, it's a great suggestion. We'll definitely add eighth grade to this.
And, and one other question is, is you had mentioned the different pathways that students are taking. Will this, will they be kind of catered to the different pathway?
Yeah, so that was, it could get quite big, right?
We don't want it too complex, but yes.
Don't we have seven different pathways?
Yeah.
So, um.
Can I just interject one thing? I think, um, just for terminology, so there's the graduation pathways, but then there's the post-secondary pathway. And I think what we've talked about more is the post-secondary pathway. Am I planning to go to, onto the military? Am I planning versus the graduation pathways?
Got it.
So I think we did, we did talk about that. We met about that. This is sort of version one. And then the next iteration could, can be and will be that, like, if you're planning on the military, here's, here's your customized version of this. Here, if I'm planning two-year, four-year trade school, whatever your post-secondary plan is, this is, uh, there'll be a version a little more tailored to that.
Because particularly for things like the military where there are some tests they need to take or for college, making sure that they know, hey, SAT dates are these dates, ACT dates are these dates. Trade schools, hey, here's the local union number. Here's when you usually need to reach out to them. All of those things would be incredibly valuable so that they know, parents know, especially parents who maybe have never been doing some of these things, they know the steps to take. And that's what I love about this is parents can, like you said, this can be a checklist for them. It helps them see exactly what they need to be guiding their kids through and the kid can see what they need to be doing at each step of the way to not just graduate, but succeed in the next step.
Okay, so I, let me just make sure I understand. So when you say post-secondary pathway, you're talking about if someone comes on board and does more like CTE training versus? Or is that, that's a graduation pathway, isn't it?
Well, there's, there's the graduation pathways that are, are. Okay, so as part of the grad, the state graduation requirements, you have to earn credit in certain areas. You have to complete a high school and beyond plan and a graduation pathway. You can do that through, there's a CTE pathway. There's like, um, passing the SBA pathway. There's, so there's different pathways that, or, or taking and passing the ASFAB. There's, is there, are there seven different options there? Or it's about like course-taking? Those are, they're, they should be really highly aligned with what your plan is for after high school.
Right.
Which is what we kind of talk about as your post-secondary pathway. But not, they don't completely line up that way. And we just want to clarify that there's like the actual graduation pathway, which is part of the graduation requirement. Then there's what's your post-secondary pathway? What's your plan after high school?
Yeah, so the reason why I'm asking is because I'm just trying to think of, as a parent, I don't know that it's gonna make sense to me to get a what-to-expect document on what my student needs to do in ninth grade in order to be on track to graduate. But then also have to figure out what, which of these elements will help them best with the post-secondary pathway that they need to be on? So my daughter, we just registered her for her freshman year college classes, right? So she's a running start student, so she's already done with her GEs. So it's a little bit of a complicated process, but her university has what they refer to as a map. And so she kind of has a vague idea of what her major will be. And we pull up the map and it says, okay, semester one, take these GE classes. Semester two, take these GE classes. So I'm imagining something like that, that in eighth grade, we present all the different post-secondary options. You know, maybe you want to do.
That's the key, eighth grade.
Right, so in eighth grade, maybe when you get to high school, you want to do career and technical training. Okay, then they're going to go home with a map that says, okay, for our career and technical education, folks, your first semester of freshman year is gonna look like this. Your second semester is gonna look like this. I don't know. Does that make sense? What I'm trying to like.
That's what I've, I've often envisioned and talked about is.
That way I only have to focus on my pathway.
That's what, that's kind of where we're moving with this.
Yeah, yeah, this is.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So we're made, like you said, it's complex. Now, the vast majority of students, really you're only utilizing one of a couple of those pathways in, in within our district, correct?
The graduation pathway.
The graduation pathway.
Yeah, I mean, many students meet the pathway through CTE by taking CTE courses. And some of those students might be going on, that doesn't mean they're necessarily going on to like a trade school or something. But that's one of the ways, like, if you don't, if you didn't pass the state assessment, you can meet the graduation pathway through one of the.
And I guess the way, yeah, the way I look at it is, is the post-secondary plan is our, is our primary goal.
Yeah, yeah.
That is our focus. The, the graduation pathways will fall under the post, the post-secondary or the, yeah, the post-secondary program they're going into. So if they say, hey, I want to go into the trades, we're going to help them adjust their graduation pathway within that plan. But it's still, the, the goal is to get them to their post-graduation, their post-secondary plan, right? And so, so that's what.
Make sure you're fully aware of, if your goal is for your university.
Yeah, for example.
That I'm doing all the things I need to do in high school to both meet the graduation requirements.
Right.
And to tee myself up to, to be accepted into the, in, you know, the four-year university or the two-year college or wherever it is I'm planning to go, or the trade school or whatever.
And that's why I say, for, for example, for the university, you're gonna need to take, a lot of them need to take the SAT or ACT. So having the dates, telling the eleventh graders, hey, you need to be taking the SAT. Here are your dates. Please make sure parents, get them scheduled for at least one, often two or three of these tests because retaking it gives you a better score. Explain to them that they can take it more than once. Those kind of things, I think, will make a huge difference in helping these parents and these kids. Again, the people who need this the most are the people who've never done it before. And those are the kids we definitely want to be able to reach and, and parents we want to be able to help because they really aren't new to this. And so giving them the, the keys, and that's why I love this idea, making it straightforward, having a map. They just need to check the box and follow and they'll have their kid ready to go.
Got me excited. Yeah, I'm just, I don't know that I understand every component well enough to, but I trust that this is, yeah, this is good. Okay. It's a start. Yeah, it's a great start. But I love all these ideas.
Okay, um, our family hub, which is a portion of our website where we have a lot of resources for families. We have a whole video library on here as well. We've organized this by high school planning, instruction and parent tools. So, um, our new videos are the highlighted with the arrows. Those are the sections where we've added content. A couple of our videos are being finished up right now and they'll be added by the end of the month. But you can see that we've been busy at work and we've also done all our videos in Spanish. So that's, um, twelve videos altogether this year. I encourage you to hop on there. They're, they're pretty informational. They're short. They're sweet. They're easy to, um, grasp the information. I think that's what the school board wanted. What I heard at least last October was, um, information that was short in video form.
That's a tremendous amount of work. Good job, Robin. Thank you. Thank you.
Can I add one other thing that might be helpful is often you see on different sites, which you'll have, I don't know how easy, this may be a big ask. If you can't do it, then don't worry about it. But if we could even have a video up there on, that, that kind of fits the time. So during graduation, you'll have graduation requirements. So you can just click on it right there. It already shows them so they don't have to, they don't have to search. Does that make sense?
Sure.
So, because a lot of people, you know, it's like when you go to YouTube, you can search and there's lists, but there's always a video you can click on right away and watch. And a lot of times, parents don't even know where to start. And so if you just have a video there that it's already, that, that seems applicable to the period of time that they can click on, at the beginning of the school year, you know, you can have a, how to choose, something that fits the beginning of the school year. Just a video there that parents can click on right away and get them started. They just need to get started a lot of times. And so if it's easy to put that on there, that would be, you know, at the banner, kind of at the banner at the top and then people can scroll down and find other things. It gets people started.
Yeah, it's super easy.
We also talked about some sort of like cadence for pushing these out through Parent Square. So we're pushing people to the content at the right time that they need the information.
And, and again, having that right there kind of almost as a banner. Where they can just pull it up and it's right there. They hit play and they can watch it. So they get in the habit, the teaser where the cadence of every once in a while coming and checking and figuring out how to do things.
That's great. Great suggestions.
Okay, community resource information. So when we talk about community resources, we're talking about essential services that families could, could need. A lot of our employees and our staff members, they push, they push our communities and schools folks. They push people towards this information every day as part of their job. But we organized it in a way on our website so that families, as they're looking for this information, can find it easily by subject area. We push this out throughout the year via Parent Square. So families would also be proactively receiving it. And then volunteers, and Matt Scott's gonna speak about this area.
Okay, sorry, real quick. I, I didn't catch the change there going, so the community resource information. Can we just ensure that our, our administrators, our office folks, all those people who interact with parents and community regularly, they, they're like, they like know where to go for this stuff?
Okay.
That they can, it's like they're trained to like say, oh yeah, go click, click here, whatever, just. Cause they're, they're gonna be the ones filling in a lot of the questions versus folks down here.
Absolutely. Okay. Staff reminders. I think that's great.
All right, so we wanted to talk a little bit. It made sense in regards to the presentation and kind of combine a couple of them. And so one of the ones that we come to you annually on is our volunteers. The board, it's been a strong interest of the board over the last few years to promote volunteerism in our schools. And so we continue to do so through the family hub, through website information, through social media. We celebrate our volunteers through appreciation receptions. We, we, the team read luncheon is an example of, of a, of a, of a reception to, to really promote that volunteerism. And then I just noted over the course of this past year, the number of times that you all have mentioned from the DS during board meetings and stressing volunteerism. And so all of those things are really efforts that we've incorporated into our strategies for increasing those. We also want to make sure that we're providing really good, sound opportunities to volunteer. So there's always classroom and field trip and school events, but then the team rate is an example of a route outreach to the community that gives folks an opportunity to volunteer. We also have our action team for partnerships. We've got junior achievement programs, district committees. We've really stressed the, the need for parents to sit on those to provide input. Our parent teacher organizations, obviously, our parent advisory committees. We've also, you know, our booster clubs are full of folks who volunteer their time to support the schools and school activities as well as service groups in churches. And we've got lots of information on our website about volunteering. And again, between publicizing it and ensuring that there's opportunities, we want to make sure that we're increasing those. I'm really happy to report that in terms of just all of the metrics we would rely on to say, are we, are we getting more volunteers in schools? All of the metrics look really strong. So we have the first one that we look at and the one that's really tied into our key indicator is, you know, the, the four-year average for our number of volunteer applications that we accept. And you can see there's just been huge jumps since the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Over this past year, we've, we increased it. I'm not really sure how Gail up in HR is handling all of these applications, but she did say, I've been really, really busy this year. So this is the number of applications that come through.
Awesome.
So it does not necessarily mean that everybody who volun, who does an application volunteers in our schools, but we've, we've processed a lot of applications. However.
Just shows the community is engaging.
Yeah, they're, they're engaging a lot. So last year, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Quick, just because of COVID, is this similar to, you know, now that we're up to thirteen thousand? Are we about to where we were prior to COVID, do you know? Or are we above or?
I, I, I. Oh, I, I don't, I don't know that we're necessarily, I, I think that we've exceeded it because I do think that we have systems in place that are, I mean, again, I, not to give myself away, but when I was principal and people wanted to volunteer, they came and volunteered. And, and we had, you know, so I think that there are just more, more processes in place for that.
I can give a little history, history to that is, well, to be, judge it super, super quick, but just so you know. So like when, I remember when I, I first came on board, that was one of the things I was focusing on is volunteering in the school. And, and we did a whole, these guys did, put a whole thing together where they actually asked every single school what program they had, how many volunteers they had. And that actually went back. And then we saw that some schools are really, really good and some schools weren't so good. And, and, and some schools had like forty different programs. Some schools had like two different programs to bring people in. And then they kind of, through the staff, like everybody started kind of collaborating. So I, I imagine this number's much higher than it was pre-COVID.
Yeah, that's just, I was just curious.
I believe so. The other thing that we wanted to look at and want to make sure, and so we've implemented some systems within K-12 at each of our schools to really very carefully track the hours that volunteers are putting in, but also the unduplicated count of the volunteers that are actually participating in this. And so they collect that data information every month. So last year, we didn't report the number of volunteers, but we did report the number of hours. And so this year, you can see that we've increased the number of hours at elementary by close to, to three thousand. The number at secondary by a couple thousand as well. And that just, we also gave you the number there of the, of this, of the unduplicated count of folks who are volunteered within our schools. And again, those numbers continue to go up and I think that's just super positive. We do have, we do have at the, the appendix of this presentation, there is that breakdown for schools. Mike alluded to that. You will still find variations in terms of some of our schools, in terms of the volunteer hours. But again, we're increasing those at, at all of our schools and doing a great job with that. The, the second part of the goal that I was gonna, that I wanted to report on is, is our goal around all community members being important collaborators. And we had two primary. And we had two primary objectives this year in our strategic plan about this. One was to continue, to continue and grow partnerships with agencies, organizations, churches, and individuals in the community, to provide programs and supports and services for our families and students, and then to celebrate and recognize our community partners and district volunteers through social media events and award programs. So I just wanted to give a quick report on how we're doing with that. So as a, throughout the course of the year, we've been tracking that, we've been connecting fa, schools with, with community partners. And so we have, at all of our elementary schools and at ECAP, we, they all have at least one, and many of them have more than one community partner that they work with to provide either services or some aspect of, of program support to their schools. Eight of our secondary schools are reporting also to have at least one community partner. And as we kind of looked them up, and again, it's, it's challenging sometimes, we have at least 55 or more active community partners within our community that are working with our schools, which is just outstanding. Examples of some of the community partner activities and supports that are happening, they, you know, the community partners are sometimes called on or offered to provide funding for incentives to support attendance or other school events. We have volun, we have community partners who, who offer volunteers for school events and fundraisers. We have a number of our schools where the community organizations are helping with clothing drives to provide socks, mittens, hats for students. We're supporting, they're supporting our school events and staff appreciation days with food and funding. They also, these community organizations work to connect families to community resources. Some of them are providing after-school tutoring at some of our elementary schools. And so again, they're really stepping up to fill, avoid, and to be able to provide that to parents free of charge. We have community organizations that provide parent trainings and present also college and career exploration events. And those are just some of the examples of what those folks are doing. And so again, here, I have included a couple of slides, just kind of showing who some of these community partners are in regards to some of the schools, and you can get a flavor for what, all the ones that are working with our schools. And I knew you were gonna ask that, and I, and I, and I did not, I, I, we'd have to get that for you, I'm not sure, I can't remember what.
They're in every school, that's amazing.
Oh, Robin knows.
Seniors.
Helping all kids.
Helping.
Kids excel.
It's a case.
I think it's excel.
Thank you.
So. So it's, it's a, it's primarily a school supply drive. So, and it's, it's, if I'm wrong, Robin, correct me, what I'm familiar with is that it's primarily a city and area-wide school si, school supply drive. And it's really just limited to the first part of the year. So I don't know that Shake really has a ton of involvement with the schools for the remainder of the year. So some of these schools that have just Shake listed probably could benefit from other community partnerships as well.
Shake helps all of our elementaries and most of our middle schools as well. I believe they've expanded to middle schools. It's a group of, started by a group of retired Kennewick educators. They focused on Kennewick School District first, and then they expanded to the whole tri-cities. And, but it's still really a core group of Kennewick educators, retired educators that do that. And they also bring in a lot of other volunteer groups, and they have some local media that helps promote that as well. So it's an amazing group of individuals that, you know, ask for no recognition.
We appreciate all they're doing. I mean, you can see they're assisting in every one of our elementary schools, that's huge. We really appreciate everything. Highlands.
Yeah, I think in an earlier slide deck, the Highlands was, was blank, and so I failed them out, so yeah. We had some back and forth about, about their partners. So at any rate, so that's kind of a breakdown of those. So what are, so there's a couple of things we're doing in terms of, Robin and her department, they maintain a list of those community partners, so that when they're contacted by potential community partners, who are saying, hey, we'd really like to help out a school, they can direct them to a school. So it's not just always, you know, one or two or a handful of schools that are getting all the community partners, we're really connecting them and, and helping with that. We encourage schools to, to establish community partnerships as part of their school improvement plans. So in their efforts to engage families and in the community, we, we want them to be looking at how they can partner with those folks out in the community that want to connect families with resources, and that can help support them in their efforts. And then the last effort that we really do is just to recognize them. We recognize them in a variety of ways. We, you know, we have our, we, we always have an outstanding community partner award that we award at our annual welcome back assembly every August, and we try to highlight the work that, that our community partners are doing with that award. Our annual community partner event is held in November as part of American Education Week, we invite them in, and they can learn more about our school district during that time. And then we collect, select, and Tracy alluded to her, in her report, our Ben Franklin Retired Teachers Association was, was a group that we honored. They're strong partners with us in supporting our, our work, and so we honored them at the CWS Awards banquet. So those are some different things. I think the next steps really are helping schools kind of learn from each other about what they're doing and how they're utilizing community partners, so that if, because again, a lot of times, if they don't realize, hey, this is what some of these organizations can do for you, I think it can be, it can be hard. So I think we need to help our schools recognize where they can really partner and, and how these can be enhanced for, how they can be enhancing what they're providing students with that.
So just real quick, that's 38,000 volunteer hours, and that's roughly 1,600 days of volunteer from our community. So that's-
That's phenomenal.
That's amazing.
That's fantastic. And, and real quick, I, I know the appendix isn't here, but Sunset View, Fuerza, and Lincoln had 2,000-plus hours each in the elementary, and Tri-Tech and Kamaiken, Tri-Tech and Kennewick were over 2,500 hours apiece, so just kudos to them.
And I think that, you know, we talk about budget and staying on budget, but I mean, we couldn't pay for those hours. It, it, it really is a resource, I mean, the, the financial, the, the time investment from our community is, makes such a difference. When we talk about helping kids excel, a lot of the, the big differences that can be made are by community members that are sitting with the student, helping them read in team read. I, I know we've mentioned this before, and maybe there's an adventurous and person out there that has some discretionary time, and we've mentioned this before, one of the things I would love to see is someone to start like a team math, where you have that same benefit with students who are struggling to read, having one-on-one assistance with reading, it would be wonderful if we had a team math as well. So if there's someone out there that has time and has a, feels comfortable, that would be an awesome thing to start.
Okay, Dr. Pierce.
We found it. You're back, you're back up, Robin.
Throwing it out there, okay. I really want to touch on social media engagement. I know this was an area that the board had some interest in, and I wanted to update you on what we've been doing in social media. You're probably a little bit aware, if you follow our social media, but we added a digital content manager, and she just started, her name's Emily McLaughlin, and she just started in March. And just in this short, three-month period, she has made a huge impact on our social media engagement. So she's, we're really focused on content that's tied to our strategic plan and emphasizing the areas of the strategic plan where we can with our social media content. And then in particular, in student, staff, and community partner recognition, and really acknowledging the work of our volunteers that's in our community partners. And then we're moving away from infographics and we're replacing our social media and flooding it with faces from the district and voices from the district. So what we know about social media is video is king, and I could probably use about five Emilys to really meet the needs, because once our schools figured out there is an Emily, then the phone hasn't stopped ringing and the emails haven't stopped coming, them wanting Emily at their events and in their schools for a variety of reasons. She's really focused on balancing the viral trends, so bringing some of those trends and those funny moments, the lighter moments, in a tasteful way into our school district social media, and she's done a great job doing that. And we're really also focused on keeping things short, concise, and interesting, and really grabbing the attention of the, our viewers. So one example is, we had a graduation video post, says earlier this week, but as we know, it was a week ago, and already it had 48,000 views, which is really amazing. And then a second post that did extremely well was that New York trip that our Kamaiken choir students and symphony students took. And we coordinated with the band directors there to get footage of their journey and specific shots, so we could put together a storytelling video of what their experience was while they were in New York, and that was really popular. So on Facebook, just so you know, not that we want to compare, but we are posting more content than the largest school district on the east side, which is Spokane and Pasco combined. So we've got more content being pushed out, just with having one person completely focused on that. We've, our social media has been viewed 1.9 million times, that's a 63% increase overall from before we had a digital content manager. And then we're seeing our reach increase by 82%, so more followers, that means more people that were non-followers before are interacting and following now. And our content engagement, we get a ton of engagement, a ton of comment, content, or comments, which means more for us to monitor, but we'll take that problem. And then Instagram, we, we're kind of not doing a great job in our Instagram, following like, really, when you look at our Instagram, you'll see that it's all branded now, things are looking very trendy. It's a, it's kind of something that our digital content manager takes a lot of pride in, is showing me our Instagram feed and showing how everything flows together and how it looks. And then some of the indirect effects of having great social media is that we're getting a lot more media, traditional news coverage. Our news reporters in this area, they're following social media, they're getting their ideas from it, and when I, we post something that's interesting, I get a call within an hour from our media and that wanted to use story coverage on that. Any questions about that?
No, just thank you for doing it. Yeah, great.
You're welcome. It's been a lot, a lot of fun to take us to the next level, something we all knew that could happen, and we just needed the right people in the right places, and thank you for that support, getting that person on board. So, so coming soon, so this is what's happening in communications right now as we speak and this next year. So we're gonna transition all of our websites in the next few weeks over to a different platform. So we've been using a, a platform called Final Site. We've loved working in the Parent Square platform, they have been a platform called Smart Sites. We're going to transition all of our websites over to that platform. It's gonna be a lot easier for our schools to update their information, more intuitive interface, and something that our, our secretaries or our principals are already familiar with in terms of Parent Square, and everything's integrated. And it just makes a really, a really nice addition to our platforms in, in terms of technology. And then part of our new websites are going to be some video content. We're gonna start with our secondary schools, see how far we get producing videos. But when you, when you go on to one of our, our websites for our schools, you're gonna see what I'm calling a hype video, which showcases some of the highlights during the year. And as we get more footage, we can revise those, but I don't know if you noticed this, but at graduation, we had a guy out there, not just the live feed guy, but another guy that was taking B-roll of all the graduations. We've got another person out taking drone videos. We're getting all this B-roll footage, and then we're gonna be producing videos that will go on the websites to really grab attention, feature our schools, sell our schools to our community. So.
Is there any way you can involve students in that, like, like students who have that interest in the video interest?
You know, that is a great idea, and we're actually hiring two, they're not, I wouldn't call them interns, but two casual employees this summer. If you know any students or college students, high school students, no previous experience required, just attention to detail, and really great written skills as well. And if they have an interest in videos, that would be excellent to help us with our websites and getting everything launched, double-checked, and looking the way that we want to. So we're accepting applications right now.
Well, and I think to that point though, is maybe even looking at the high schools and talking to the high school principals about starting a, a media club. I mean, this is, these are now jobs, these are now occupations, it's not just for fun. I mean, as, as you said, you wish you had four Emilys. Having her perhaps oversee these clubs within each of the high schools that can gather a lot of this content, you can teach them how to curate the content, how to edit, how to get things ready. When we're talking about getting them ready for after graduation, like I said, this is, this is where a lot, you know, these are occupations in the future, these are things people can do, because this is what companies do now, this is what high schools do, this is what, what is becoming the norm. And so providing a club, just like there's finance clubs, just like there's drama clubs, having a media club where kids get to do this, I know a lot of kids already do a lot of this stuff on their own, and having a club where they can do it for their school and be involved, you know.
Okay, we're gonna call this Josh's Social Media Club, and it's gonna replace this launch of a high school social media ambassador program.
I like the, I like the high school media ambassador program far better, but-
Yeah, so that, that idea behind it is really similar. So we're, we're gonna get ambassadors at each of the high schools, a couple each, these are huge schools, two, three, we're gonna train them, we're gonna have them as contributors throughout the school year. And so that we're gonna be getting student-driven content from the schools. Another addition is CTE-focused, so there's actually a paid internship this year, and the CTE department has hired a student that will get paid next year just to produce CTE social media content. And we'll be using that on the district social media. We've also created another, another page for our social media, another channel to drive information about CTE programs, that's really CTE-focused and funded. Our other ones, they're not, they're not paid, but we're banking on that students will want this experience, and, because it is marketable skills, and so we're hoping to get some kids that would be really interested in, in doing that and participating.
Particularly maybe looking at a collaboration with the kids that are involved with Yearbook, because there is a lot of overlap in that, and, and maybe reaching out to some of them and saying, hey, would you, I know Yearbook is actually in a class in some of the high schools, where perhaps in the Yearbook class, you could also have some kids doing the social media for the, the high school website and, and for the social media content. Just another idea to try to give these kids experience, learning how to manage and curate this stuff.
Yeah, great ideas, and we're finding that a lot of students that have an interest in photography are also very interested in social media.
Well, and that would be a nice way, I don't know exactly what you had in mind for the high school media ambassador program, but couching it within a class is helpful because it gives them designated time to work on it. But then also, you could expand it beyond just the high schools, and that could be your team that goes out to the second, to the middle schools, to the elementary schools to collect all that information that they are wanting to share with you, and then they have that dedicated time to actually leave during that class period to buzz over to Lincoln Elementary, get the stuff they need, come back, I don't know, just a thought.
Interesting, yeah.
Let's give them credit.
Tracy and I met this last week, and we were actually talking about whether, you know, the work, the work-based learning might be an option, but I, we'd have to have more conversations with our CTE folks to find out the stipulations. So, yeah. Any other questions? Thank you.
All right, we're gonna take a quick two-minute break here, we restarted. Okay, five minutes. I was thinking of myself.
Music.
All right, next up, we have Mr. Matt Scott, course offerings, arts, extracurricular activities, and athletics. You are, sir.
All right, well, great, so again, we have an annual performance indicator report that we give in June, so we can update the board, right, regarding student engagement, performance targets, so we've got a few of those. So we will launch right in. So within our students' ready-for-their-future goal, we had a couple of, or we have a couple of performance targets we look at. One is, we want greater than 90% of students, families, and staff report- reporting that students have opportunities to learn the digital citizenship, social life and employment skills within the KSE learner profile. We also, within our engaged learners' goal, have performance, two performance indicators. One, that we want greater than ninety percent of middle and high school students to report having access to diverse course offerings, activities, and athletics. And then we also, this year, kind of tweaked the performance indicator for athletic participation because we want the percentage of middle and high school students participating in at least one sport identified as experiencing low income to be increasing each year by greater than three percent. So, those are the performance targets we're going to be speaking about. But I wanted to start with a review of course offerings and student survey results in regards to those two questions, and talk a little bit about our athletic participation data, and then review with you the athletic survey data, and also talk a little bit about our potential additional sports offerings that has, have been an interest of some of the community. So, as we look at our course offerings, this is just pulled directly from our course catalogs. But at middle school and high school, we offer a variety of courses that are elective courses, performing arts, visual arts, career and tech, technical ed, or CTE, and other electives. And so, again, we will offer a wide variety, more in high school than we do at middle school because there's just more core requirements at middle school in terms of reading, writing, math, social studies. But I think that one of the things we really are focused on, particularly at middle school, is providing some survey of student choice when it comes to elective options. And so, I think some of the things that were just being discussed in terms of some of the social media things are, are just right for potential looking at elective courses in the future. But at this point in time, this is kind of the offerings that we have out there, depending on, again, student interest. But you see a wide variety of course offerings. We asked two questions on our survey that are related to this. And the first one we ask is if they have access to diverse course offerings, activities, and athletics. And in full disclosure, I believe the board had some discussion about separating these out as questions on our survey. And I take, I take full blame that I did not get that done when we revised our survey. So, it has made a note for next year that we'll revise it so we can dig into which one of those. So, it still is kind of being provided as a, as a, as an aggregate. And you'll see some ups and downs in regards to that, particularly eleventh and twelfth grade less students saying that they feel that they have access to diverse course offerings, activities, and athletics. So, I think that, again, just being able to ask those questions separately will help us with that in the future. When we talk about opportunities to learn our learner profile skills, digital citizenship, social studies, life, and employment, again, we kind of see some modest ups and downs in terms of that. But again, I think that when I look at both of these and some discussion that we had even today when we're talking about our survey data, is how we address as leadership, you know, what is the survey data telling us? So, in this case, is this a situation where students don't really understand the connection between what they're learning and these skills? And we need to be more overt about that with our teaching? What do we need to do to help our students understand the importance of what they're learning as it relates to being a learner for the future? So, one of the other, one of the other things that I put together was just kind of based on some of the discussions that we've, that you've had as a board and looking rather than at year-to-year data and seeing what happens, what does it look like for a cohort group? So, that's what I did here. Unfortunately, it doesn't necessarily show us a huge, it doesn't give us a huge thing to go on, but it is an example of maybe how we want to look at this information. So, again, the, the orange line or the red line there is the course offerings question. And this just shows how our senior class, they just walked across the stage, how they rated that throughout their high school. And then the blue is the digital citizenship. So, again, I think this is interesting to start delving into just a little bit when we're talking about the experience that our students are having, how they're, how they're seeing this. Because I think that the other piece of it, you'll, is just the difference between our staff believing that we're giving them these skills and what our parents and students are experiencing. And I do think it's just a lack of clarity of that and lack of communication around it and making sure we're all speaking a common language with them. So, our district, district performance indicator around those two questions is here. Just, and again, this is aggregated by district. So, we had eighty-eight percent of our students. So, we're just short of the ninety percent goal for, a percent of our students reporting having access to diverse course offerings, activities, and athletics. And then as we look at the other question around our learner profile, seventy-eight percent of our students indicated so that they, they felt they had opportunities in that realm. So, as we look at our athletic participation data, again, lots of numbers here, but this is just numbers of students at middle school that participated in each of our sports. We listed out beginning season because there's always more kids that start the season than end the season. But then we had the total number of students who ended the season having participated in the sport, broken down by grade level. Our seventh grade and our eighth grade students are able to participate in sports at the middle school level, and this is a breakdown of those. When we look at our high school participation by sport, again, this is district-wide, we see the breakdown of various sports there. Just of note, we are sunsetting gymnastics. And so, again, you kind of see where the participation rate is there. And again, these are not, these are, these are duplicated numbers. So, this is the student participated in football, basketball, and track. They are reflected within these numbers. And so, you'll kind of see the, the breakdown of the, the number of students that participate. In relation to the new, the new performance indicator that was discussed last year, what we, how we broke this down for you was taking a look at middle school. What were the total number of students who were enrolled in the two grade levels that can participate in sports? So, that's our first column. So, you see the breakdown there for the schools. And then the total number of students, this is the unduplicated count at each school who participated in athletics. And then the percentage of the total student population that participated. And so, you can see that broken down in the first three columns. Then by grade level, we took a look and we said, of those students who participated, how many of those were identified as low-income students? And, and what was the total number of students per grade level that participated? And that gave us a total low-income student for seventh, eighth grade. And we then crunched those numbers to give us a percentage of low-income students. And then the last column is just to compare the percentage for each school that, that, in terms of their low income. So, that's the total population, sixth, seventh, eighth grade. So, for example, Shute Middle School has about, has forty-two percent of their total student population is identified as low-income. Thirty-four percent of their student athletes were low, were low percent, were low-income. What you'll see is that our, our schools that are impacted more severely, Hurricane Highlands, they have obviously participation rates that are pretty close to their, their free and reduced lunch numbers, their, their low-income numbers. Some of the other schools, maybe they're a little bit less than those. And I think that, again, this is a baseline year in terms of looking at this data. And we'll kind of see how that plays out. Because I think, I think that what we would like to see is at least have that percentage. If twenty-five percent of your kids are free and reduced, then you should have about twenty-five percent of those kids participating in athletics. And so, that's, that is how we broke that down for middle school and as well for high school. And so, you can see kind of the comparisons there in terms of, of the schools and, and their participation. What we wanted to do, though, is also talk with our schools about what they're doing to remove the barriers for our low-income students. Because schools have done this for a number of years. They realize particularly our students, our schools that are heavily impacted. But schools even that are not heavily impacted. I was the assistant principal of Desert Hills, and we would have kids who desired to go out for sports and, and maybe didn't have the resources to do it. And so, there's a variety of ways that folks use their community partners for this. But we have access to InvestEd funds. InvestEd is an organization that, that provides funds and, and to help schools provide what they need to for students. So, you know, they might need wrestling shoes or something like that. And so, they can access InvestEd funds and get those. But additionally, InvestEd funds, many, many of our staff and coaches, our school, I mean, our school employees give very freely to help kids, particularly when they know that they're, they're encountering those barriers. Communities and schools coordinators reach out to families. They help offer that assistance. At the schools, we have community in schools. And then all the schools are really promoting low-cost physicals whenever those are available to make sure that we're removing those barriers for, for kids. Again, now with some baseline data, I think it's going to be helpful to us to dig in a little bit deeper to those things and find out what we can do in terms of removing some of those other barriers. But those are things that are currently happening now. So, we look at the district performance indicator. Right now, we, we would say that we, we feel like looking at our numbers. So, we have forty percent of our students, the forty percent of our middle and high school students participating in at least one sport that are identified as experiencing low income. And so, our goal for the coming year will be to increase that by three percent each year. And then this just breaks down the, the total numbers that we were looking at to help you with the math part of it.
Sorry. So, Matt, I know we're going to talk about it in a little bit because I submitted a question earlier to ask if we know why students who aren't participating in sports, if we know why they're not participating. These are some great supports that we have from the community. But one of the things that I think is a barrier particularly for the high school students is that so many of our athletic activities are off-site. So, I'm most familiar with Kamaikin. You know, both softball and baseball practice off-site. Certainly bowling does, swimming does. A lot of the athletics take place outside of the school grounds. And so, transportation, I imagine, is a barrier for a lot of students who may like. So, I'm just, I don't know that I'm necessarily asking a question. I'm just making an observation that perhaps we need to look into some of those solutions, too.
Absolutely.
Matt, the other comment I wanted to make is, is right now we have that performance indicator with the goal of increasing by three percent. I guess I would ask you and the board, is that what we want our goal to be? That we increase it by three percent? Or is it more something along the lines of what you've already mentioned? And that is, is that percentage reflective of what we see within the general population? Which I, I think may be a better indicator. If forty percent of our students in general are participating in sports, I don't know if I need to have sixty-five percent of low-income participating in sports. So, I don't know if I need to increase it. I just, what we want to make sure is, to the point that Ms. Gladhill brought up, we don't want a disparity where kids are not participating because there are barriers that are not surmountable. And I think that's what the whole point of this indicator is. So, maybe perhaps instead of saying increasing by three percent, we say our indicator and our target is, is that it matches the general population.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Yeah.
The biggest thing is I just want to make sure if you want to, you can.
Yeah.
That's the biggest.
That's the whole point of this indicator is to say, look, we're not, there aren't barriers there. If this is something you want to do, we're making sure. And that's, I think, the better way of, instead of saying it's increasing, we're saying, is it on par?
Yeah.
I'll make a note of that and add it to the notes from the study session. So, when you go to review the key indicators to make any adjustments for next year, that's on the notes.
Yeah.
You'll be there, right? Sorry.
Okay, so, we're gonna.
That's right.
So, we're going to go ahead and jump into a little bit. As, as Ms. Gladhill indicated, we had talked a little bit about our athletic survey that we do every three years. So, we're required to do that every three years. And I'll talk a little bit about that survey. But I wanted to just remind the board, so that we have as a, as a board and as a school district, you know, basically said that the sports that we are willing to support are those that are WIA sanctioned. And so, when I look at the list of WIA sanctioned sports, and so this is just really for your information as well, right now, we, we don't offer three of the, of the WIA sanctioned sports that we, that are available. Slope pitch softball in the fall for girls, swim and dive for boys in the winter, and flag football for girls, which was a new sport that was just recently added. And that is, falls in the spring season. So, I just wanted to, to illustrate that for you as we get into the Student Athletic Interest Survey. So, the Student Athletic Interest Survey, again, we're required to administer it every three years through, or by, by Washington Administrative Code. And the survey has been developed by OSPI. So, we, we surveyed students in grades six through eleven. I don't, I don't know for sure that six through eleven is required, but we said we're going to go ahead and do six through eleven because they can participate in sports. Of the middle school responses, we got twenty-two hundred, twenty, almost twenty-three hundred middle school responses. We got fifteen hundred and twenty-six high school responses. We had the survey open for about six weeks. It was also corresponding when we had our student survey open as well. And the survey, again, is OSPI-developed, and we can't change the survey. And so, one of the things, and I, you know, I, not to be critical of OSPI, one of the things is that, you know, they're really asking, like, a lot of the questions on there about sports that are not WIA sanctioned. So, again, it kind of hamstrings. So, we had lots of kids who were, who were selecting sports that are on that survey that are sports that we wouldn't even probably offer based on the fact that that's, that's our, our parameters. But the, so they're not really aligned with the WIA sanctioned sports. And then it asks the students to select up to six sports that they might be interested in, which can become kind of problematic when you're trying to determine what are students really interested in when they can select six different things? What is their priority? And, and doesn't really ask them for a preference. So, I think those are a couple of things that make the use of the survey a little bit challenging. But here are the survey questions, and I'm not going to go through and read all of them, but it gives you an idea of what they were asked. And there are some options that are provided, but then they're also able to provide an answer. So, if they don't want to use one of the, the options that are offered. So, in looking at the survey data, what I really did is, you know, I took a look at it and I said, okay. So, in the survey data, of, of the students who indicated that their school does not offer a sport that they would be interested in participating, participating in, I felt that was a good way to kind of say, okay, what, what could lead to increased participation rates in athletics? Because if kids are saying, I'd like to participate, but I don't have the sport that I want isn't offered, what does that look like? And then I really broke it down by those three sports that we don't offer that are WIA sanctioned. So, in the survey results, for example, there were a lot of kids who wanted weightlifting. Like, weightlifting was the, was the highest one that was there. Another one that was really, really very popular was badminton for boys and girls. Boys volleyball was a really high, highly-rated one for boys, too. So, there were a lot of sports. So, again, I don't want, these are the responses of the students, both at high school, boys and girls, middle school, boys and girls, around the three that we don't offer that are WIA sanctioned. So, you see the breakdown there. And in, and so, as we look at it, which really was, was being looked at as part of our discussion around the feasibility of maybe offering a new sport. So, we've had folks come and comment to the board, particularly around swim and dive. And we've had some reach out from folks who know about girls' flag football. We'd had some discussion about slope pitch softball about a year ago. So, I think that it is, you know, that as we look at this, we have moderate interest in, in indicated on the survey for flag football, of boys swim and dive. I think one of the challenges is, you know, do we have more if the gift? I mean, I think some students didn't answer that because they know we don't offer them. And so, they'd select them, and if we offered them, would they, would they do that? We already broke down for you a little bit of our estimate of the initial recurring costs for, for both boys swim and dive and girls' flag football. A couple of the considerations that we would have in those is really, like, what is the competition? So, for example, boys swim and dive, we would have immediate competition within the MCC because Richland and Pasco have boys and swim and dives. So, there's, there's competition here locally. One of our challenges with the gymnastics was that nobody was offering it locally. And so, our, our, our girls were having to go to Spokane to compete all the time. It's not really clear with girls' flag football who is going to jump on and, and offer that sport. So, you know, the challenge with girls' flag football that I think we would need to look at is it's offered during the spring. And spring is a time where we have a lot of sports that are accessed by female athletes. Track, softball, I mean, there's, there's a lot going on that, at that time. And, and it does, could potentially create some challenges around practice space. And there's always a concern when you add numbers, when you go back to the chart I showed you before, like, are we taking away from other sports? But that's really more of an adult issue than a kid issue because I tend to think we should offer the sports kids want. Yes, go ahead.
Just one, one quick thing on girls' flag football, and I didn't get a chance to connect with you on that. But I read something maybe yesterday about there's potentially some flexibility.
Yeah, this is good with the season.
Yeah, with the season. So, that's something we just need to follow up on. It might, it might not be just limited to spring.
But you would think that you would want to have it in the season that the majority of the state is also running it just so that you have opportunities.
Or at least within the MCC, I think.
Sure.
It's going to be difficult either way because in the fall, you've got volleyball and soccer. And then in the spring, you've got volleyball and tracker are our biggest.
No, no, I know. I just, I just mean if we're going to offer girls' flag football, we want to do it at the same time. Then in the neighboring, yeah.
Yeah, so.
You know, and, and again, it's, I don't want to, I don't want to portray these as like, well, we can't do them because these are just considerations we're going to need to make. The facility availability is one of those things. Boys swim and dive is a winter sport. And so, we need to have a heated pool and an indoor space. Certainly Memorial Pool over in Pasco, they're doing some things that are going to create an indoor space there, which will be helpful. There's a potential with the city of Kennewick down the road. We've had, we had, we haven't had any discussions, but we just heard through the grapevine that there may be some interest in providing an indoor pool. there may be some interest in providing an indoor pool space for, that it would be in Kennewick and part of the city facilities. So it's just kind of hard to know. But practice, practice space and field space particularly is, is always an issue. We want to always have a balance of boys' and girls' offerings each season. So there's those considerations. And then there are, there is an impact of added workload on our athletic directors, on our athletic trainers, and on school. All these sports require supervision of sometimes, of some kind during their athletics or that, like, the events. And so there's all of those things that we really need to look at. As we, as we considered it, or as we consider it, one of the things would be that if this was something that the board was interested in adding one or both of these sports, it would be really imperative to do some study and some planning prior to determining levy amounts, because you would want to account for it within that. And so it's a tight timeline. It's not something that couldn't be done. It certainly is something that, that we could look at. But I, again, that's, we, those are things that we need to consider. And some of the things that we've studied to this point, particularly given the community input around adding boys swim and dive.
Question. At this point, I know I've, I've talked to different community members that have talked about lacrosse and seeing what it would take to, to have lacrosse. Can Kennewick School District be similar to some of the other school districts in the area like Richland where they're, right now in our school district, we recognize them as a club, but not as a sport, correct?
Yeah, we actually added a new category of club a number of years ago.
Yeah.
Based on the dialogue with the lacrosse people to add an athletic, a sports club is one of the categories of club.
Okay.
Because the stance has been to date that will, the athletics we do are WIA sanctioned sports.
Is there a reason, or is just that's what we've always done?
That's, that's really just been our approach and practice. And I think in dialogue with the athletic directors and, you know, field space and all of those, you know, many reasons, that's been our stance to date.
Okay. I, I mean, I think as we're looking at other sports, I mean, one of the more popular sports in the area is lacrosse. And it might be one that maybe we make an exception for and say, look, maybe not fully fun, but maybe allow them, I mean, I don't know what, as a sports club, does that allow them to use our facilities? And what does that allow and what does it not allow?
As a sports club, and I can follow up and give you some information in, in terms of what's in the, in the policy, but it allows them to access school communications. They can meet for club activities. They can have a line item in the ASB. They can promote and communicate. They cannot access through our building use, field space on this, on the schedule. So they're not, they're, they're treated as a youth sport group on this fee schedule versus like a school sport.
Okay, so if they were school, school sport, they wouldn't have to pay for the field. But as a club sport, they do need to pay for the field?
Yeah, and it's pretty, they don't really pay for the field. Like, there's, I can follow up and show you the fee schedule on the, but they, like, they have to pay for some, and I'm just, like, custodial and things like that. There's, there's not like a rental for the, for the field, if memory serves, but there's some, some supplemental expenses that have to be paid.
The turf, the turf fields, the turf field is one that, that we, we charge for because of the upkeep for the turf fields. But if it's just grass practice space, if it's just grass field, they're, they're not charged for that. The only way that they are charged for it is if they are collecting a gate. So if they're, if they're raising money off of the event, then, then we do. And so that's in line. And I think that, again, we've had some...
Just one other, one other thing. The other difference is, like, that, that we don't, they're not our, our coaches.
Right.
We don't supervise their...
Their teams.
They're, yeah, you know, because they're, and they're not, because they're not, like, within the WIAA. So one question I would have, or I think that would just need to be looked at, and I know that every, you know, district approaches things a little bit differently, but since the board delegates authority to WIA for that oversight, and, and lacrosse isn't WIA, how does that part of it work?
Yeah. No, I just, I was curious, just, like I said, I've gotten feedback from different people in the community, and certainly, you know, if there's a big demand within our community for the sport, you know, if we're, we're looking at numbers here, and we're talking about adding a sport that may add, you know, 20 people, that's great. But if we have a sport out there that's wanting, that has 50 or 70 people already that are really wanting to do it, it might be something that would be worth looking into and saying, how much would the cost to making lacrosse be more, more than just a sports club?
It's, it's working within the confines of lacrosse is not WIA approved. But, but from a cost perspective, the last I saw, I mean, it was less than 15,000 is what they ended up paying. So could there be discussion on how to come up with the 15,000-ish roughly?
As I'm saying, maybe, maybe make an adjustment, find out what some of the other school districts do for, for it, and kind of be on par with them. So then, that there's, instead of certain, certain high schools in the area having one thing and then others not, everybody's just kind of on par. We're all doing the same thing. Makes it easy for parents, makes it easier for, for the athletes. You know, they can get, I think I've talked a little bit about, they can get a, a letter in, in lacrosse, just like a football player can get a letter in. Now, I know it's not WIA, but WIA doesn't make the rules for lettering either. So that way, all our athletes, whether they're doing a WIA sport or not, can, can be celebrated and, and achieve at, at a lettering, which is something that often colleges look at, I think, and say, okay, he lettered for four years. Again, we're just trying to make it so that, that our students can, can have an opportunity to excel in whatever they're trying to do, whether it's, it's a, a WIA sport or not.
I wonder if there aren't just a few small changes that could make a big difference if we did keep it as a club? Because I just did a real quick search for Richland High School's lacrosse, and it's actually listed on their school website as a club. There's information right here. I can click on three different links for how to find information about joining the, et cetera. So I wonder if that wouldn't expand the opportunities a lot if we just kind of embraced the club a little more and said, hey, let's give you some further supports. We'll help you communicate, we'll help you advertise, we'll help you. And that way, it can still stay at an arm's length as far as not being WIAA sanctioned. We don't have the same relationship, but we can certainly help with communication and involvement.
So I do, yeah, so, so we do have, again, within our, within our policy and within the designation of them as a club, there was, there were lots of things that we wanted to do to help them be able to be publicizing their events, to be able to recruit players, to be able to be in the yearbook, you know, pictured in the yearbook, all those kinds of things. I will say that we, that when I've checked recently, they're, they're haven't, they haven't been active as sports clubs to do their Southridge or Kamaiakin this year, meaning that they don't have a, a staff advisor, they're not necessarily meeting. Now, we haven't penalized them in any way because they're not necessarily meeting. But, but that is a part that is, like, you gotta kind of meet us halfway there to help us do those kind of things because, but I, but I agree that if we're not providing them those things and looking for how we can be, how expansive we can be and including them in school culture as a club, then they're gonna probably say, well, why bother? So I think that's really important for us to do as, as well with that. And certainly can, you know, look into those things to continue. There are a variety of, you know, there are, some of those sports that are not WIA sanctioned are offered at other districts, and they can be done. But again, we've, we've made the determination that we're gonna stick with those for a variety of reasons, all, not, not all of which I pull out of my brain right now.
So I just want to make one quick note for the board to have on their radar is, is Matt alluded to this, the biggest problem by far, it's not even close, is field space. There's no field space. And one thing that we should, could think about with the bond figure I saw, that I asked Tom for some numbers about rented facilities, that, the reason why is because I'm thinking, like, if we could just put lights only, like, maybe like very inexpensive lights in just the middle school fields, that would open up a huge bit for, for these clubs, and then a revenue source, too, potentially. So, so that would be, do more than pay for itself, I hope. But, you know, we don't have to bet, like, I mean, it'd be really cool to have turf, but that's probably not a reality, right? If we just have lights in the bond coming up, so just something to think about.
I would just say, I'm, I'm, I think we, my, my opinion, I think we move forward, I would love to see us move forward with boys swim as an option while trying to understand what girls' flag football is gonna look like. I think, I think girls' flag football is probably still...
Conversation with the other...
Working through things and leagues and all that stuff. But I, I think boys swim is an easy, easy one for us to move forward with potentially. That would be, that's what I would think, I don't know about.
We could be the front runners for girls' flag football. We could be the first ones to jump in, support female sports.
I mean, I support them. I, I just think we just need to coordinate with everybody else and make sure we're all, like, lining it up at the same time.
Yeah, so I mean, maybe it's worth saying, okay, could we do a little bit of research and look into what it would take to make that happen so that it can be a consideration for the levy? Since we do have...
Or even perhaps start it out as a club where they're playing just, I mean, see, again, part of it, I look at this, and if they're, they're able to put six sports and we've only got, you know, 15, or 15 girls, or, excuse me, 17 girls looking to do flag football, I, i- if that's a true number, that may mean that only nine or 10 would go out, which wouldn't really be enough to, but, I mean, I guess, but I would say, we've seen swim and dive, we've got coaches that are already willing to coach, we've already got things, I would, I would say that's one that, you said, we, it's a short timeframe, we're probably already starting to put in the numbers on that one. I would say, let's look at putting the numbers to that one to add to the levy.
Yeah, I, I want to just quickly reiterate on the survey results. You know, I think it's different as students taking a survey just generally asked, what might you be interested in, sort of, versus, hey, if it were offered, and if it were offered during this season, would you, would you play? And so I think there's a different specificity of survey that needs to happen to get real interest numbers on these things. And that's part of the next step feasibility and research, so it can all get, like, potentially teed up. Because as we know, athletics, activities, those, that's all levy funded, that's all not, you know, basic ed, that's the enrichment that levies are intended to really fund. So that would, it's the, it's the right time to be digging a little deeper. We'll leave good notes and, you know, make sure that some of that's all teed up, so we can...
Yeah, but you're talking about doing it for both boys swim and girls' flag football.
Yeah, I think that there should be more...
It should be both.
More feasibility, like, actually, if these were gonna go, how, how could we make it happen? And then getting real data from kids who are in the system saying, if this were offered at this time, would you play?
Well, and slope, slope pitch, or slope pitch, slope pitch, too. Because slope pitch was, I mean, there, that is the other one that we're not offering, and it may be preferable, preferable to students for that versus the others.
Let's, yeah, let's do the feasibility and find out there, so.
Just one, yeah, just one more quick, oh, I'm sorry.
No, I'm just saying, yes.
Okay, so Ms. Gliddon had emailed a question, so I just put together a couple of slides really quickly because, again, on the, on the survey, we really wanted to take a look also as to the reasons why students aren't, aren't participating. So this is just a breakdown on the high school survey. We had 356 of the students who responded, or about 47% who responded to the survey, said that they weren't interested in participating in sports at all. So there was a fairly sizable number there. 188 responded that they didn't participate because they had family responsibilities after school. The 183 responded that they were too busy with school, but that they would like to participate. And 98 reported that their grades were too low, they would participate, but the grades were, were, didn't allow it. And then 95 responded that the sport that they like was not offered. So again, you know, we kind of looked at what sports they were, were thinking about. Also took a look at that for the middle school survey. Now, middle school's a little bit different because there's less sports offered, number one. And then it confused our kids a little bit, because the sixth graders didn't say, like, this is what we want to take, they're just like, well, we can't take sports, so what does it matter? So we had lots, and then we had, so we had 526 kids selected other as the reason for why they didn't participate. So like, they're middle school kids. 353, though, responded that they weren't interested in participating in sports. That was about 25% of the responses. 205 responded they're too busy with school, but that they would like to participate. And then 192 responded that the sport they like wasn't offered. So I think that there's some things there that we could potentially delve into with some of our student groups, is like, you know, so what about school makes it too busy that you can't participate in athletics? Would be an interesting question for that.
Thank you. Matt?
Hey, just one more thing, just one more thing I'd like to say. Thank you very much for the comments that you all made, and Tracy has been wonderful to work with. I like to tell those, so that when Tracy came on board, like, and I, I applied for my job, Assistant Superintendent, she and Dave Bond interviewed me. And then I was informed, I got the position. And the way I was informed was like, Tracy would like you to be Assistant Superintendent. And that was really great, it was awesome. And so then shortly after that, people would say, like, well, this new superintendent, like, what, what do you think about her? What do you, and I would just always tell them, well, she's made great decisions so far. Anyway, thank you, Tracy.
Thank you, Matt.
You can smile all you want.
All right. Next up, we're gonna, we've got new business, we've got the curriculum adoption cycle, and Alyssa will run us through that. And then our student board representative-elect and our high school schedule and literacy graduation requirement.
Couple, couple, making sure it's the longest meeting to end.
I don't have any questions.
Okay, here we go. All right, we're gonna talk a little bit about the adoption cycle tonight, just where that's grounded in policy, some of our interests, what our current adoption cycle is and why we want to propose some updates. So it, it is in policy that we regularly establish a review cycle so that we've got a system reviewing our curriculum. And we have one, we do have an adoption cycle. The, we have some interests as a district. We want to make sure our teachers and our students have the best quality materials possible. We want as many district-wide adoptions as possible so we can have a guaranteed and viable curriculum across the district, we can organize training, teacher collaboration. It's very important that we're fiscally responsible as well. A few years ago, we moved from an eight-year to a 10-year adoption cycle, and that's what's causing some of these adjustments that we need. So I'm gonna explain that a little bit more. And then there's been some added areas of focus, and we want to make sure they're on our adoption cycle as well. So right now, about a year ago, I came to the school board to adjust the curriculum cycle so we could adopt K5 ELA. Our subscriptions were expiring, and we need, we needed to make sure we had a material. So this is our current adoption cycle that we have. Okay, with that, we've got some challenges. So I'm gonna point out a few of those challenges right now. So this is our current cycle, adoption cycle. We are expiring some of our science subscriptions. Some expired last year, some are expiring this year. It is, it's budgeted, we are getting them through to this point, but it's a year short getting them to this spot. So that's one of the adjustments. The other one I want to point out is, two years ago, we did a dual adoption. Now we have a K5 ELA adoption. We'd really like to get them back together so they're at the same time. And we, we just happened to have an opportunity, are you guys okay?
They're bartering candy.
Distracting me. It's okay. Okay, so the dual was actually for 10 years, and the K5 ELA was for eight. So we could, we have a chance to get them back on and still be very financially responsible with that. Another one that's coming up really quickly is our social studies for elementary will be expiring next year. So that's on our radar right now. So with all of those coming up, here are some of the recommendations that we want to make. I kind of explained them, but this slide has some of the financial implications. We'd like to move the K12 science up by a year so it aligns with when our expirations are gonna happen. That'll cause us to move K5 science back a year, and we're okay with that. We've been doing a lot of adopting in K5. We need to get used to our materials. We really want to align, align K5 dual language and ELA so it's at the same time and not have two separate adoptions. That, that's gonna be a real challenge this next year with CKLA. With the K5 social studies expiring, we think we've got some potential with all of those CKLA materials, having social studies in, Benchmark has it in them. We have a lot of free resources from OSPI for since time in Memorial. We'd like to look at next year, reviewing those standards and see what, where is it already included? Do we even, could we do with these materials, hit the standards, and then maybe just get a few smaller pieces? And then we'd like to add financial education into the adoption cycle along with social emotional learning. So we're looking at that at a regular... So we're looking at that at a regular, um, system of review and educational technology.
So Alyssa, real quick, on the K-5 social studies?
Yeah.
So I, since Time In Memorial was, was developed because a lot of general, um, curricula don't have that, don't have material that meets that state standard, correct?
Right.
So you're hoping that the new CKLA will have enough of the state standards in it that we can just continue to use Since Time In Memorial to meet the rest of the state standards and that will be.
That would be my hope.
Okay.
But I think we need to do a thorough review and then if we need to add a few things in, okay. But do we need to buy a complete?
Sure.
Um, curriculum, uh, it's new, brand-new instructional material. So with those recommendations, um, sorry that the colors aren't very vibrant on here. This, um, would add in those sections and then also, um, get those aligned. So, let's see, where's the math? The science flips here, um, so we can do that one. Um, and then the new ones are in here as well. Social emotional learning is here, educational technology is here. We align that when we think the state's gonna be giving us the, um, it's aligned with the state, um, system of reviewing them. And then we're gonna talk in a little bit about a financial literacy recommendation. So it makes sense that next year, we look at financial, um, education and having that on the review cycle. Even with this, I, I'm still watching it closely and I just want to point out a couple concerns on the horizon that we, I just want to watch and make the board aware of. The six, twelve social studies is gonna be expiring as well, but it's not quite as urgent as the K-5. But we want to watch it and see, uh, it's a little bit different with social studies being like a course in middle school. So that, that's coming, um, and we're watching that. The other one we're watching is, we think we can, we might have a digital renewal. We'll have to do for a year with the K-5, but we think it's minimal, um, impact. And then, um, if at all possible, our elementary teachers are doing a lot with new curriculum right now. It, it's a really heavy lift of our teachers to do math and then in the next year, do ELA. Um, if, if we can look at breaking these up in the future, but this is a ways down, it would be ideal to split some time there. But, so, we're watching those closely right now. So the recommendation is to approve, um, the updated adoption cycle as presented.
Before we take a vote on that real quick, why is it that moving the K-12 science up one year, when it says included in the twenty-four, twenty, twenty-five budget, does that mean it's already in the budget and it no longer will, we won't be spending that money anymore or?
We, we've purchased it, but we're a year short of the current cycle. We couldn't get it. It wasn't available. So this makes it so we can, it, this moves it up a year, so then we can have it on that.
I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the curriculum adoption cycle as presented.
Thank you, Dr. Miller, Patty, the roll call vote.
Mr. Connors?
Yes.
Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Glad Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Valentine?
Yes.
And Mr. Galbraith?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion passes five zero. Next up, high school, twenty-five, twenty-six student board representative-elect.
We're excited, obviously, that Diego will be taking on the role of student board representative next year. So we look forward to having him here up on the dais, which means we needed to identify a student board representative-elect. Uh, we interviewed, we being, Micah, Brittany, uh, Matt, Diego and myself. We interviewed four excellent candidates, applicants for student board representative-elect. And we are recommending. Leonaya, Leonaya Sosa from Southridge High School, uh, for the position. And you'll learn more about, uh, you, we can say more about Leonaya. And we'll get Robin, uh, after the, the board makes a decision here to do a write-up and we'll get, uh, her, a profile up on the website.
Great. I will take a motion to appoint Leonaya.
I'll do it. Um, I move to appoint Leonaya Sosa as the twenty-two, twenty-five, twenty-six student board representative-elect.
Great. We have a motion. Patty?
Mr. Connors?
Yes.
Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Glad Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Valentine?
Yes.
And Mr. Galbraith?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion passes five zero. We will move on to our final business item, high school schedules and financial literacy graduation requirement.
Okay, this is two years in the making, this, this work. We started looking at financial literacy, uh, last year and, uh, board decided not to make it a, a recommendation yet. The legislature didn't move on it, wanted us to do some more feasibility in terms of looking at high school schedules and opportunities. So I want to just quickly highlight the efforts that we conducted in twenty-three, twenty-four, update you on what we did this year, make a recommendation, uh, share an implementation plan and timeline in a little bit of data. So these are just a reminder of the objectives from twenty-three, twenty-four related to potentially making financial literacy a graduation requirement. In twenty-three, twenty-four, we did a whole lot of work. Uh, we hosted focus groups with students. We did surveys. One thing we asked families and students, uh, since we have a computer competency graduation requirement, we wanted to know, um, how important families and students feel that that is and, and they responded that it is important. Computer competency is important. We asked them about financial literacy and they also responded, financial literacy is important. And you can see those numbers are a little bit, uh, higher. We, uh, ultimately, the board kind of paused on moving forward, uh, on recommending that we make it a local requirement, even though the state wasn't ready to make it a state requirement. But the board recalls, hopefully, that you passed a resolution, uh, talking about how important financial literacy is and being very supportive of it becoming a statewide graduation requirement. So that brings me to this year and the work that we did to complete a feasibility study to see, are, are there more ways for students to potentially take, uh, courses? Are, are there flexibilities you, we can look at or different schedules? So there's more room to have both the computer competency and the financial literacy requirement. And how do we also strengthen, uh, the support for post-secondary planning? So what I'm gonna present to you is an attempt to accomplish both of those objectives. So we did a lot of work this year and work mean looking like meeting with principals to discuss and look at different schedules for high schools that are in place across the state. And, uh, with the interests in mind and figure out, is there something different we ought to be doing? So the bullet points you see here, uh, reflect to the findings from hours and hours and hours of meetings and work that included Rhonda Pratt and Alyssa and Matt and the high school, uh, principals. We looked at all of these options to potentially change high school schedules, like seven-period days and trimesters and all sorts of other things. But we find, uh, uh, we, we have found that we don't believe that those are financially viable options. That's not how we get funded to offer high school courses. And districts who have made those changes, like seven-period day and trimesters, are now reverting to traditional six-period day. That's one, one part of our findings. We also believe that there is more flexibility in that twenty-four credit frameworks. Remember, you have to earn twenty-four credits to, to, to graduate. That's the state graduation requirement. And you have four years of high school and there's six periods a day, so you have twenty-four spots to earn those twenty-four credits. However, there is quite a bit of flexibility that exists within that twenty-four, uh, credit framework. There's competency-based credit, which we have policy for that. Uh, there's work-based learning. Talked about that earlier. Students can earn world language credit through stamp assessment proficiency. We've got credit recovery options. We have zero and seven-hour options in our system. There's the two-credit elective waiver. So students can graduate, receive a waiver for two electives and graduate with twenty-two credits. There's the competency-based, we'll get into that a little bit more, but there's PE, there's, um, different ways, right, of creating more flexibility. Plus, we've got summer school options and students can bring up credit from middle school. So there's more flexibility than sort of meets the eye when you think about a six-period day. We believe that instead of changing the six-period day schedule, we should really focus our efforts on increasing the communication and understanding, both of our own staff and, uh, of, of parents about all of these options and this flexibility that exists within the framework. And we believe we can implement a financial literacy requirement, a competency requirement, maintain the computer competency requirement and continue to increase the support we're providing through high school and beyond and college career readiness. The support that students have told us that they need and want, um, without changing the high school schedule. So here's how we think that we could do that. So in a nutshell, and then I'll show you how it would be phased in and what it would actually look, look like. We think we should consider, continue with a computer competency graduation requirement, implement a new financial literacy competency graduation requirement here in Kennewick, beginning with the class of thirty. That's the earliest we can do it. It would be this year's twenty-four, twenty-five, uh, seventh graders. There'll be eighth graders next year and you have to communicate what your graduation requirements are when you're in eighth grade prior to entering ninth grade. We, uh, want to strengthen how we're integrating high school and beyond plan and college and career readiness activities and support into the computer applications course that most students take to earn computer competency and they earn credit for it, and into the financial literacy courses. And implement a common district-wide approach to how, in addition to what's happening in those two classes, computer apps and financial literacy, a district-wide approach to scheduling through like creative assembly schedules and things like that that are just baked into the day, how we're going to provide time within the school day for counselor facilitated high school and beyond plan activities, college career readiness, interacting with school links, uh, but not just like students on their own, that, that what our kids in the, in the superintendent student advisory council, they talked about, they said, we need more handholding. So they need more support and this is a way to do that. So, um, we also want to see if through this, uh, district-wide approach, we could also potentially provide the, the opportunity to earn credit for completing that all four years of high school. So what that would look like in actual implementation would be for next year, so for school year twenty-five, twenty-six, for the graduating classes of twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, that's the, the ninth through twelfth graders who will be, ninth through twelfth graders next year, computer competency will remain the graduation requirement. And just like now, it can be met by, you take computer apps and it, today it's a one-point-oh class. It's a two-se semester class. Or you can meet that competency requirement through, uh, an approved alternative or by taking the competency-based assessment. And we've made some changes to that competency-based assessment to make it more accessible and passable, uh, for students. And, uh, already, and it will continue, right now, computer apps course does include some limited high school and beyond college career readiness activities. It's integrated in, so that would continue. Next year, for these graduating classes, we will also, it's already in the course catalog. We've got kids signed up for it. We're offering a standalone point-five, one semester, financial literacy course. And there'll be some limited high school and beyond planned activities in that course too. And then we also have like financial algebra and other content courses where students are earning math, but they're also getting financial literacy.
Really quick, Tracy?
Yeah.
When you talk about on the computer competency, having approved alternatives, that one, oh, will the financial literacy course be one of those approved alternatives?
We had not talked about that being, it's just two, two different, uh, but like computer science, there's computer science courses that count for computer apps and.
I was, I was just curious, as we're implementing this, if kids want to already do that, kind of, they, they want to be part of what we're gonna be doing in the future, can they start now and do it?
They, they can start, take, they can take the point-five standalone financial literacy course or.
But it won't go towards their.
It won't count toward, yeah, those don't get cross.
Okay.
Counted.
Just curious.
And then next year, the focus would be on, okay, developing this common district-wide approach for scheduling more dedicated time. So schools are doing that today, but they're just doing it in different ways. Kamaiakin has a different approach from Kennewick, from Southridge. We want there to, let's take the best of what's happening currently in the schools and develop a district-wide approach so we can, uh, have it be, you know, a unified system-wide approach for how we're doing this. So that would be the work next year.
Yes, with that, I, I think that's integral, and I've talked about this before, integral to that needs to be, the parents need to be involved with that counselor facilitated program. Because w- we can't expect ninth graders and tenth graders to be on top of this as, as, as we'd hoped they would be. But particularly in, in situations where parents may not understand the process. For example, if a parent has never gone to college, it's very unlikely that they're gonna know the process of getting their student ready for college. And the student may not, and I would hate to put it all just on the student, that they have to go through the whole process just with the counselor. They, they, they benefit from sports of parents. And that's where I would say, as we, I love this. I think a common district-wide approach is great. As we do that, let's make sure and include the parents in that process because that's gonna be integral in making sure the kids follow through.
Yeah.
As we all know, the parents help increase the likelihood of follow-through in, in, in this program.
Absolutely. Good. Okay, so, um, that would be the work for next year. Then the following school year in twenty-six, twenty-seven, now the class of twenty-thirty, um, they'll be ninth graders, right? So now, computer competency will remain a graduation requirement for them. But now they can meet it by taking a point-five computer apps. So it's gonna get, computer apps will get a little bit, um, truncated. So it'll move from a one-point-oh to a point-five. Or still, they can have an approved alternative or take the competency-based assessment. And there'll be even like more high school and beyond activities integrated into that course. And so I just, you know, C, our CTE director, our high school, I, I should have mentioned Abby earlier as well. She was part of this work. And, and it really builds on work that we did the previous year, getting input from staff and thinking about how we could do this. So everybody was, you know, very on board with this plan. So computer apps would go to point-five, then financial literacy kicks in as a graduation requirement for the class of twenty-thirty. And they could, they'll meet it by either taking the point-five financial literacy or the approved alternative or competency-based assessment, which needs to be developed. And that point-five financial literacy will even have like more, you know, we'll take a look at what's in there next year and make sure it even has sort of more in there. So now, in, starting with the class at twenty-thirty, students will have a, instead of taking one-point-oh computer apps, they'll take one, half, point-five computer apps, point-five financial literacy and high school and beyond is included in there. And then we'll be able to implement that common district-wide approach, starting with the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year. Will get developed next year, implemented the following year. So then for the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year, for the tenth, eleventh and twelfth graders, right? They, we, they won't have a new, you can't add a graduation requirement to them. So however, they'll be able to also meet the computer competency requirement through the point-five class, okay? They will still also be offered, they can sign up for financial literacy as a point-five course. It won't be required, but it's available to them and they will benefit from that common district-wide approach. All the students in high school will benefit from that common district-wide approach to high school and beyond and college career readiness. So if, it, with this plan, next year's work would be developing the common district-wide approach. And, uh, Alyssa mentioned adopting financial literacy materials, which they're readily available, free, uh, good stuff out there. And then the work around determining, once this common district-wide approach is, can we, is, is, is ready to go and implemented, can we also then award credit to students for completing high school and beyond? So I just want to mention school links in here too, because school links is our electronic platform that I, I like to think about it as our instructional materials, right? Like when we adopt CKLA, it, it, CKL is great as materials, but what does it take? It takes a skilled teacher interacting with those materials and the student to make it effective. it effective. School links is kind of our college and career readiness, high school and beyond instructional materials, right? It's the electronic platform that is intended for teacher, student, parents to interact with, but it's got the content in it. And it can do, it's a very powerful system. We've implemented it here in Kennewick, this is year three, thank you, year four for us, and now it's the statewide adopted system. So Chris Rechdel just put something out a couple days ago that they're going to come through, OSPA is even going to come through for the funding for it, even given all the state budget cuts. So I, I won't go into all of this, but we had a year-end meeting with our school link account management people, and, so I just wanted to show, like they were highlighting some things, just all of the things that are in this powerful system and how it is really going to help us with this common district-wide approach and partnering with parents around all of this. So lots of power in this system, and there's even some additional features, and the one that caught my eye, we don't, I don't have a lot of information on it, is this NCAA eligibility tracker. So I know that that's been kind of a question about how do we make sure that the people in the system are, have, have the knowledge, they need to be able to support students, et cetera, so we're going to take a look at some of these things and see if these are features that would be beneficial for us to add into our suite. So there's going to, there's kind of the core suite that you get from the state, and then you can add things on, add enhancements, and, you know, we've been, we've been at this for a while, so that might be something that we do.
Really quick, just going back to the timeline, it looks like, so next year, the computer application class will still be one credit, correct?
Correct, one semester, yeah.
One full credit, two semesters, next year?
Two semesters, I'm sorry, yes.
Yes.
Two semesters, and just knowing that, yes, if students take it, they earn a credit, but they don't have to take it to meet the graduation requirement.
So, so we'll let them know that, that next, well, the seniors will, the seniors will have to take, if they haven't taken a, a computer applications course, they will need to take that course.
Or the competency base. It's a competency-based requirement, so yes.
Yes, so one of those two things. The, following that, though, it will only be, they only will need to take one no matter what, one, one semester.
Starting in the 26, 27 school year.
So they, so they-
Computer apps becomes .5.
So essentially, juniors and sophomores, really to graduate, will only need .5 computer applications.
Which frees up space for them to take financial literacy.
They won't have to.
They won't have to as a graduation requirement, but it, it frees that space up so they can.
So, so, just to make sure, we should be telling our sophomores and juniors, well, freshmen, sophomores, and juniors, probably don't take computer applications next year, right?
No, I don't think we should be telling them that. I mean, sign-ups have already had it, that's the trouble with this, there's going to have to be a transition, right? And so one thing we talked about is, do we keep it a 1.0 for these kids? Like, starting in 26, 27, do we keep it a 1.0? And we're like, well, that's not probably the best alternative.
Okay.
And I will tell you, many people, like kids like computer applications and they're getting high school and beyond plan support and school links time in that.
So there's value to it?
There's, absolutely.
If it's not for their requirement.
Yeah, and the requirement, like, you know, it's, it's still the same as it is today, but the reality is it's not required. Students don't have to take computer applications. Most do, but they're not required to. They could take the competency assessment if they would prefer, or they can take computer science or other things that meet that computer competency requirement.
Perfect, alright.
So, real quick, I just want to give you a little bit of, of data on some of, like, where we are with competency credit and some other things, just so you can see. So we've got more students, you can see from this slide, earning elective credit for paid work experience. That was policy put into place and you can see there's increase there, that's good. We've got in our graduation requirement procedure, ability for competency credit to be earned through state national assessments and what score you get. So look at this slide, I'll let you read it for yourself, but it shows you that ELA and math credits and science credits that students have earned through competency credit by accessing state national assessments and meeting the standard on those. We've got computer competency, so you take a look at these numbers, increasing test administered, increasing and more students passing based on the changes that have been made. We've got a PE assessment, again, we just need to be communicating and clear about these options and we've done work on that, we've reported on that numerous times throughout the past couple of years. Look at that pass percentage now.
That's better, it's awesome.
Okay, good work happening there. World language, so this is, credits earned through stamp testing, right? So really impressive numbers there, like some students earning up to four credits of world language. Sealed by literacy, data there, so this is, it's both earning the, I just have to think about it off the top of my head, it's both earning the, is it a WEDA score and the stamp? And, there's, thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you. So both the, both the showing that you're meeting standard in English and fluent in another language. Thank you, Alyssa, sorry about that. So, anyway, based on all of this, recommendation is that the board approves the implementation of a financial literacy competency graduation requirement, beginning with the class of 2020, 2030, and we follow the implementation plan and timeline as presented.
I just would like to reinforce, I mean, you look at some of these numbers and you can see the discrepancy, for example, between the schools and the world languages, and it may be population-based, but, but one of the things I, I would wonder is, is, are there kids who don't know about these opportunities? And that's again, where those counselors sitting down with these kids can really help direct them to these opportunities, saying, hey, let's, you can get credit for being able to speak your language, especially some of these immigrant populations that, that are already fluent.
Yeah.
And so really having counselors that are sitting down, that's where I think it, it's crucial that we're making sure we're utilizing our counselors to help them with these things to graduate, talking them about computer competency, competency tests. I would suspect that probably more than 37 kids want to take, would, would try to take that test. I suspect a lot of them don't know it's there. And so, you know, we need to be making sure that our, our counselors are helping them know what resources are available.
Yeah.
And again, particularly parents, because as you, as you tell the parents these things, they will often explain to the kid why these things are beneficial. Hey, if you take this, you have more credits to take other classes, you can do other things, this can help support you in doing what you want.
Yeah, and I think it's really a team effort, I mean, this, what you're saying is really what we discussed with the third bullet. We just need to focus increasing communication and understanding, and that's a team effort between district folks, I mean, Robin spoke to things that, that she and her team are doing in communications aligned to this work, CTE, building principals, counselors, it's all of us really focusing together.
There's no further questions or comments, I will take a motion to approve-
I'll make a motion to approve the implementation of the financial literacy competence graduation requirements, beginning with the class of 2030 and the, the planned timeline and plan details as presented.
You have a motion, thank you, Dr. Miller. Patty? Roll call vote?
Hey, Mr. Connors?
Yes.
Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Gladhill?
Yes.
Mr. Galbraith?
Yes.
Thank you.
Alright, moving, moving on, next meeting agenda will be consent items only, there will be no public comment. Board members will attend this meeting remotely. We have no other businesses authorized by law, so I will adjourn Dr. Pierce to last meeting.
[laughing]